Today is Tuesday, October 1st. It is now 6:25 PM. Town council meeting in town council chambers. 1170 Main Street, West Warwick Island. Jay, you lead us in prayer.
We ask for the wisdom to make good decisions, to speak with confidence and listen with compassion, and to work together to create a better way of life for the people of West Warwick. Amen.
Jay, you listen to Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, just make sure you're speaking into your mics clearly, as I said in last meeting. People online cannot hear us.
Roll call. Councilman Dennison?
Here.
Councilman Luchardi?
Yeah.
Councilman Messier?
Yeah.
Council Vice President Williamson?
Here.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
Forum is declared. Consent agenda, approval of the minutes from the September 17th, 2024 town council meeting.
Move approving consent agenda?
Second. Moving second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Ordinances, first reading of ordinance 2024-18 amending section two general purposes, section three definitions, section four division into districts, section five use regulations, section 18 power of the town council to establish a zoning board review and adopt zoning ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second. Moving second, Al?
This is the same ordinance I presented two weeks ago. However, due to the discussion regarding the mandates that were being forced upon us from the state, especially particularly the ADUs, I have removed those. However, I have sent an email last week requesting that those could be reconsidered and placed back in the ordinance. As I stated my reasons in the email to you, it's just makes it much more difficult for matter to come in where we have to make Bob or Marilyn and I have to make a decision that involves an accessory dwelling unit that's not in our ordinance, we've got to go look to the state statute, we may miss it. There's that problem. In addition, what bothers me is that if it's a matter being brought to us with an attorney and I say to the attorney, "Look, our ordinance doesn't follow state law," the attorney's probably going to say, "Okay." But if I got to try and explain to the layperson that even though what you read in the ordinance says what you read, that's not real, that is something else. So I'm asking that the council amend the matter for second hearing and allow me to put back in the material that was, that I had removed regarding the accessory dwelling units.
Any questions for Al?
No, I think actually it makes sense. We certainly aren't looking to make your job harder or the planners' job harder or Basileon's job harder as housing. And I can understand, and as you explained to us when we first looked at the issue, state law is going to win the day. And for us to have different set of laws and rules on our books just complicates matters, I think, for you. And I think that's what you're saying, Al.
I think the action taken two weeks ago, it informed the state, it said something. It said, "Look, we don't want you shoving all this stuff that's no good for our town down our throats." And you spoke your piece now, let's move forward with it.
Yeah, and our last meeting, or that meeting when we discussed that, you know, I was concerned. My question to you is, is this going to be a burden to anybody in this building to deal with? And at that time, I wasn't aware that it was going to be such a burden to deal with it. So, you know, now that you've made that clear and we've made our point to the state, hopefully they received that point, then I see where you're coming from now.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you taking the time to bring it back to make things easier here in town hall.
I would ask for a motion that it be amended for me to reinstate the state mandates.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Moving seconded. That's just a motion, this is just a vote on that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Any other questions for Al on the ordinance? Any public comment on the ordinance? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Can I vote yes?
Thank you.
Since Al is here, can we move three to two? Because then we, because he has to leave.
Make a motion to move number three up.
Second.
Moving seconded?
Sorry, G3, to clarify, G3.
G3? Sorry, you want to read three, G3?
First reading of an ordinance amending chapter 11 motor vehicles and traffic, article two operation, adding section 53 penalties for violations to the code of ordinances of the town of West Warwick.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
After you passed the low speed ordinance, the chief and I realized we had said no low speed vehicles on certain streets, but we didn't put any punishment in. And what the chief and I asked is that you add $100 fee per offense. That's the only change.
Any questions for Al on this?
Al, do you think $100 per offense is the way to go, or would you think escalating it?
Just my discussions with the chief, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, we're not anticipating a great deal of activity on this. We, I think the chief feels every now and then, you may get somebody doing it, but that's why we figured just to put the word out there. And I think that anybody in, with the chief, that anybody who's out there in a low speed vehicle and gets nailed for a hundred bucks, just want to think twice about doing it again.
Okay.
Any questions for Al? Any public comment on this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Can I vote yes?
Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Have a good night, Al.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
First reading of an ordinance relating to homeless encampments.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Moving seconded, discussion. Before we get into a public discussion on this, we had a lengthy three and a half hour discussion on this the last council meeting. So just try to avoid being repetitive if you do have a comment, and I'm going to start off with the town manager.
Good evening. As you recall, at our last meeting, the solicitor and I were directed to put together ordinance recommendations to handle the council's directive on handling encampment issues targeting the date of December 2nd. So our solicitor took the first stab at this draft that we're looking at tonight and distributed it as the agenda was put forth. I felt it was important, since the solicitor did that, that he had reasons setting it up the way he did with certain sections and certain verbiage. And I wanted him to have the opportunity to present those reasonings before we started circulating some suggestions and amendments. I know that I spent some time on it. I did not change his format, I just looked at it from my perspective and sent that to all of you to help foster some continued discussion tonight. But before, if you don't mind, since one of the amendments, before we get into the ordinance part, is talking about the encampment response team that I thought was important and I think is an important part of this process, because in my mind, we all understand that we're not legislating or arresting ourselves out of a significant issue that's not only born in West Warwick, but statewide and nationally. So I just kind of wanted to reinforce the fact that we did formalize an encampment response team internally that comprises the town's EMA director under the leadership of Chief Verone, the police department, the fire department's EMS services, the highway department, Thrive Behavioral Health, and members of our social network with the Health Equity Zone amongst others. And we started a more formalized process of going out to the various encampments, identifying their locations, their conditions, the folks that are there, reinforcing the, what the opportunities are, and in some cases, the lack thereof, to find out how we can be of assistance to get them to proper shelter. Because in my mind, this encampment issue should be bifurcated. It's not just a homelessness problem or unhoused problem. It's that separate from some issues that we're experiencing in and around encampments. And it's not just a homelessness issue. The issues around encampments is more some criminal and inappropriate behavior, the health and safety and sanitation issues in those areas, the enjoyment of our park and town-owned property for others. And when there are issues, our first responders have some significant challenges in getting there safely and getting people in need of services out safely. So it's a much broader issue. So I wanted to allow Chief Verone a few minutes just to kind of explain what the encampment response team did. They did their maiden tour, if you will, last week, and he can explain a little further on that process. Because I think it's important to understand that the town is compassionate and wants to do the right thing. This is, in my estimation, more important, and it's a continuation of stuff that we've really been doing now for months, if not years, but it's just a little more formalized. Chief?
All right, thank you. So the team got together, we had a meeting and we set some goals. The goals were to use the community paramedicine to assess any medical needs. We had members from Thrive Behavioral Health that were there for outreach and counseling, the local heads, the Health Equity Zone to give survey questions, West Warwick Police to get an accurate count and identify the population and to photo document the areas. We ID'd specific encampments and mapped them. DPW was there, they assessed the area for cleanup, whether we'd be able to do it or if we might need a private contractor in some cases to do that. We also provided the verbal first notice of any action that might happen on December 2nd. So those were our goals going out. So the Thursday, September 26th, the team met at 6 o'clock in the morning at DPW headquarters on Junior Street, and we started from there on a walking area, walking from there. So present were Wendy Boudreaux from the Health Equity Zone, she is the community organizer and food access assistant. We had the housing first lead case manager from Thrive Behavioral Health, Tripp McCrary, and joining later was a peer recovery specialist from Thrive Rivka. DPW Director Jeff Caldwell, we had two West Warwick Police Officers and the behavioral navigator from the West Warwick Police. Our coordinator for the Mobile Integrated Health Community Paramedicine also came along. So we had quite a few people as we proceeded. We visited 12 separate sites, and we had personal interactions with the individuals at each of those sites, and all of those interactions were positive. Team was well received, everybody was respectful, and, you know, we had a good interactions. The total number of individuals that were identified were 44 in those 12 different areas. We distributed NACAN from community paramedicine. When we team up with the outreach and they go kind of on a weekly, but there were probably about 20 kits handed out last week of NACAN. Cleanup assessment was completed by Director Caldwell. He put a rough number of about 22,000 to clean up all 12 different sites.
Is that for us to clean, for DPW to clean that up?
So, so you'd have to ask the director, I got that number, but I'm sure he could answer exactly how that breaks down. The ongoing work that we're looking now after this, right, we visited everyone, but some of the things that we want to look for going forward include confirmation of the populations that are on the state coordinated entry system. So now we've identified as a municipality, the individuals, we can check and make sure that they are all on the coordinated entry system. So Thrive is going to be doing, assisting us in handling that. We're also reaching out to the West Warwick Housing Authority to see how many of the 44 are on their list, okay, to see what avenues might be. Another thing that while we were doing our tour through the encampments, we did find several hypodermic needles. They were properly taken and disposed of. We obtained Sharps containers, and we're going to be putting those out into the areas and hopefully reduce the number of needles that are on the areas or anywhere else. And part of what the community paramedicine would like to do going forward also would make sure that there are primary care, you know, providers with each of the encampment individuals. So those are some of the things that we're looking for going forward.
Any questions for the chief?
How does that work as far as, as you said, you picked up several needles? Are you talking, you know, three, four, or 25?
There were about a dozen, maybe a little bit more than a dozen, but in that area, in those, in those 12. So they were mostly, they weren't in each site by any means, there were just a couple of the sites that.
And how does the Sharps container work? Is that like?
It's a red hard plastic container that when the needle is used, they can place it in the needle. When you go into the doctor's office, you'll see the red containers. So those are what they are.
So who's going to retrieve those and when? As it was just put out at the sites and left there and then?
No, we'll retrieve them and dispose of them properly.
Thanks. As I mentioned, this was just the maiden tour, if you will. It'll be a scheduled thing that we'll probably do at least every other week, and we'll increase it based on need and amount of contacts and the feedback we get on what they experience and do their after-action reports.
And how long does it, will it take for you guys to figure out who other people are on, in the coordinated entry or where they are on the list? Like, how long does that process take?
I'm not 100% sure, but I would think it would be in a few days.
Okay. So days, days as opposed to weeks?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But just being on the list doesn't mean that, that may take quite a while.
And it's a very intricate system. People who are awarded vouchers sometimes can wait 12 to 24 months and sometimes longer before they get housing, even when they get the voucher.
But different things affect where they're ranked on that list, right? Whether it's age, I know veterans are definitely given priority, are there other things that come into play as far as moving somebody up the list?
There is, so the length of time that you've been out, health issues all play a role. So there is a system, there are other people in the room that could talk much better about that than I. But, you know, how long you've been out and on the coordinated entry system. So the outreach workers have to have contact with the individuals, and they need to update every 90 days. If they don't, they get dropped off from the list. So if they don't have a contact in 90 days, they get dropped off the list, they go back to the ground zero, even if they were out for 18 months, they lose one, they're back at zero from what I understand. That's my understanding of it.
Does something like what's happening now affect that list?
It may. It may. It may, it may affect their, so there are other people that can talk better about that than I.
Thank you, chief.
Yep.
I'll defer to the solicitor to expand upon his initial draft.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. What I tried to do was a concerted effort to avoid conflict as to what certain communities had done in the past, but obviously, we cannot please everyone. So I believe you all received a letter today from the ACLU. I did have a nice 10-minute conversation with Stephen Brown today, and I asked and invited him to provide us with any assistance that he could. But I tried to break it down into about 10 different parts. Number one is the recognition and responsibility of this issue or problem that faces the town of West Warwick. Secondly, was to determine the health, safety, and welfare of all of its citizens. Third, the burden presented to the town and its employees. Number four, the financial burden it presents to its taxpayers. Number five, the dangerous elements that exist within the encampments before we even get to issues pertaining to behavior or criminality. Those elements are fire, garbage, environmental, because sooner or later, DEM is going to have to address what's going on on the riverbanks and what's being placed into the river by the occupants of the camps. Obviously, the criminal element, issues pertaining to sanitation, clean water, and sewer. I was cognizant of the fact, and I wanted to make it clear that just the fact of sleeping outside in and of itself is not a crime. However, criminal behavior, just like in any society, will not be tolerated at all. I was given a directive that legal notice was to be made to the existing occupants, indicating that the encampments shall be eliminated as of December 2nd, 2024. West Warwick shall attempt to assist in any type of relocation or assistance to those occupants. However, that's going to be based upon monies received from either the state or federal government, because as this council knows, there's no supplemental money in this year's fiscal budget to address these issues. So if Jeff Caldwell is telling you right now, there's a $22,000 cleanup cost for the 12 sites happening once, if it happens again and again and again because the sites are filled up, there's just going to be an additional expense.
Not to cut you off, but just to add to that point, that's 22,000, it's also taking the guys off of the street, doing other jobs throughout the rest of the town, too.
But the, my 10th point was, the public has a continuing duty to notify public safety in the town of West Warwick as to what is going on. Being silent does not help the issue. So if you see any type of criminal activity, you should report it, because as this council has been made aware several times in the past, say, five years, the West Warwick Police Department do respond, they do investigate, and if necessary, they do make arrests. So the format of this, starting off with the preamble, and then getting into some definitions, and then getting into some just notice issues as it pertains to what can be addressed regarding some of the criminal activity and some of the other behavior, is really, as it indicates, it's a draft. So for those that want to make changes, whether you want to reduce the, with the content or you want to increase the content, it doesn't make a difference to me. I did put in two issues as it pertains to information we have received, one from the federal government, the document that's entitled 19 Strategies for Communities to Address Encampments Humanely and Effectively. And the second one is the Rhode Island Homeless Bill of Rights, which was passed in 2012. So those documents are going to be utilized along with the task force or in order to come up with the corrective action plans, which are going to be moving targets, because things are going to be changing, especially now since the weather's getting colder and winter's coming. So again, it's a work in progress. Any modifications obviously will be put into writing. So at the second reading or at the first amended reading, because we basically planned this out going backwards from the December 2nd date, you're going to have two additional meetings after this one. One will be the second meeting in October, and the first meeting in November after the election would be the date that if everything's finalized, that would be the passing of the second reading, and then within 20 days or December 2nd, it would go into effect. So if there's any questions right now about the ordinance, I would be happy to try to answer that.
Any question from the council to Tim, the town manager, or the fire chief? I will open this up to the public. Any comment or concerns? I don't want to cut everybody off. I think this young lady had her hand up first, though.
Hi, my name is Gayle Lavier. I've been going through, I cook at my house, I cook at the house I'm staying at, and it's not my home, but I cook there and I go to the church and I feed the homeless every Tuesday. Sunday, in my church, we feed, in my church, we feed them on Sunday. I've been around everywhere and I explain to them that the problem that people are having is because of the neatness, it's not neat, it's dirty, it's garbage, it's terrible. So I recommended last time I was here, if instead of paying $10,000 a year to have one person in jail, because they may get riled up, they're getting riled up by the police already. One of my friends, the police officer went up to him and said, "I want to see your shoes." He said, "For what?" He says, "I want to see your shoes." So he says, "All right." So we checked out his shoes, he said, "No, you ain't the one who robbed Jenren." Why, I don't understand why they're getting them riled up. All right, maybe that's not important to anybody, but it's important to me. I'm trying to get them where they're cleaning up the place, and we're trying to have them have bags. Now, why can't they have bags and a garbage bucket, whatever, pail? And then when it's time for them to pick up the garbage, why can't they just come pick up the garbage? Why don't we all work together? Instead of, I mean, if you had a child and you were sick and tired of his drugs and his drinking, you threw him out, wouldn't you want him somewhere? I mean, in a tent, but would you want that tent knocked down? If they just clean up, can we just work together? I mean, I don't think that's so hard. I wouldn't want my child out there and, just because I can't handle the drinking and the drugs, I don't want him having his tent down, that's all they got. So that's going to make a problem. And then having police officers harassing them. Enough is enough, why don't we just work together? That's all I got to say.
I will, I will speak on my behalf. I think we have tried. In the encampments, we've worked with Olaski Street, we've worked, and they just go from one side of the town to the other, to the other, and they leave the same mess everywhere.
Well, I've been going around, and they've been cleaning it. They have, it's all clean, it's two tents.
And again, we went over this hours last time when you were here. You know, when people are in their backyard who are living on East Main Street as an example, and they can't sit in their backyard without somebody doing something back there illegally, yelling profanities or saying nasty things to their children, it becomes a burden.
That's a problem.
And it is a problem.
But I don't think the one behind the school that that should be harassed.
Unfortunately.
It's way far away from the school.
Unfortunately, with any ordinance, we cannot say not behind Maisy Quinn, not behind Horgan, it all has to be addressed.
Exactly, but this is like way into the woods, and then it comes down and it's city. And they're cleaning up. I seen it today, I went over there today, check up on them, and it looks nice, actually. And I didn't see no garbage bag. So they are trying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's next, and she's raised her hand. Just state your name and address for the right.
My name is Alyssa. I live in Bristol, and I'm here tonight because this specifically affects myself and my children. We have both been homeless. It's important to me, I also volunteer for the Coalition, and I speak on, it's important to me because each one of us are so close to being a paycheck away from homelessness. I am in the middle of fighting an active eviction at home. I am a domestic abuse survivor, and I, I was fortunate enough to secure a housing voucher, given my circumstances at home. And I, you, probably none of you know this, but when you're on the housing choice voucher and you receive section eight, if you have something happen to you, I'm going through an active eviction and it's illegal, but if you are evicted from your home, you lose that voucher and you end up back on the streets. So a lot of these people who are in these encampments are facing those circumstances, and they have nowhere else to go. And I pose you this question. I know that it's unsightly. I know that it's unsightly. I know that you don't want to see it. Where else do you want them to go? You all have homes to go home to. I'm fortunate enough to have my home right now, but I could lose it at any moment. I lived in a shelter for a year with my children, a year. And I wrote this very fancy bill and legislation that I wanted passed. And when I contacted the Coalition, I found out that it had already passed. And I'd like to share it with you all, and I think that you guys know the statistics, but just to have it in your face, it's important. These are difficult realities to acknowledge as it forces people to reimagine their ideas surrounding homelessness. It brings the issue closer to your doorstep, as it should. It affects every single one of us and it could be closer than we'd like to consider. In two thousand and nineteen, a widely cited report from the brokerage firm Charles and Schwab found that fifty-nine percent of Americans were just one paycheck away from homelessness, a reality compounded by more recent economic losses caused by COVID. This is an uncomfortable reality for many. Let us not be fooled. Homelessness ends when someone is in a home. Let's start by removing the obstacles and get closer to that reality by working together. Homelessness is a symptom of a traumatic event, the loss of a job, the inability to pay for needed healthcare costs, domestic abuse or a mental health crisis. Why are we looking to pass legislation that would further traumatize the most vulnerable population in our community and in the world? We should be working together to remove these barriers, identify the need and care for those in the community. Yet we are criminalizing these experiences with this proposal, and these folks are being further traumatized and impacted, their ability to overcome the overwhelming obstacles that they are already faced with. It's damaging and traumatizing in these people with no choice, no voice and no shelter. Having a safe and decent place to live is really a fundamental right. Every one of these folks in the encampment is being told by this legislation that they have no rights and they're being taken away. The decision would also lead to fuller further polarization within the community between the police department and this at-risk community. In two thousand and twenty-two, sixty-point-six percent of homeless people were cisgender men compared to thirty-eight-point-three percent of cisgender women. Around one-point-one percent were Americans, non-binary or questioning, in which fifty-seven percent of unchallenged women report that domestic violence was the immediate cause of their homelessness. Other adults are now the fastest growing age group of those experiencing homelessness, composing nearly half of the homeless population, according to an October two thousand and twenty-three Department of Health and Human Services H A S report. More than twenty percent of all unhoused people have a serious mental health condition, according to an article posted by the National Alliance on Mental Illness. Lastly, of the sixteen-point-five million veterans in the U.S., there is an estimated thirty-seven thousand homeless veterans in two thousand and twenty and around fifteen thousand living completely unsheltered. These are our veterans. These are the people that fought for our country. In January of two thousand and twenty-three, there were seven-point-four increase in the number of veterans experiencing homelessness from two thousand and twenty-two, according to case studies. We owe it to our society at large to be in charge of the world and ensure a better future for all of our neighbors, our friends and our foes. We all deserve a hand up and the opportunity to succeed. Let's be the change that we want to see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Vincent Mars, who from Twenty-Eight Crossland Road, West Warwick, former National Service Director for the federal government for thirty-one years, also deployed more than a half a dozen times to oversee humanitarian relief work around the country with hundreds of National Service members. I spoke the last time we gathered to discuss this issue. And on Sunday, I took the liberty of getting on my bike, going on the bike path to do an informal assessment. I'm shocked but not unsurprised to hear the chief indicate that there are at least a dozen sites. I visited two, the one directly in back of Horgan, in back of the, on the side of the skateboard park. And it seemed to be clean. I I didn't, I was by myself. I didn't make any direct contact with anyone there. But it looked orderly and I didn't see any illegal activity at that time. I continued down the bike path and I was shocked that directly in back of the West Warwick Manor, where the Housing Authority is located, off the bike path is another encampment with, I don't know, at least two, I think three tents, with maybe about eight people. One tent had an elderly woman over seventy years of age who looked like she was in serious mental, in in serious health condition, as well as her forty-six-year-old son, both in the tent, laying there, trying to rest. Okay, I also, I talked to one of the other individuals there who was looking and and asked if she could get rehabilitation or drug treatment help. And another gentleman, and and a gentleman who indicated he was a veteran, fifty-two years old, who does not have a drug problem, but he's got an alcohol problem, and he would like help. So yes, this is complicated and we we need all hands, medical logistics, you know, and support, case management, housing to deal with this. And I'm still not sure whether the town has asked for support from the League of Cities and Towns and the state delegation to really tackle this, because all the municipalities are becoming overwhelmed with this issue. Our solicitor made reference to the letter that was transmitted this afternoon to all of the members here. That letter was not only transmitted by the ACLU, it was transmitted by the Rhode Island Housing Advocacy Project, which I volunteer and and assist with, the Rhode Island Coalition for the Homeless, which many years ago I provided National Service members to, in order to begin them, to start their effort, Better Lives Rhode Island, which is a case management service organization for the homeless, as well as the ACLU. I'm not going to read the whole letter. There's one paragraph, though, which sort of summarize summarizes a sentiment that a lot of people had have when they attempted to read this proposed ordinance. And I'm still not sure what today's item is, whether this is really a first reading of the proposed ordinance, because if this is the proposed ordinance, we have some serious problems. Just let me read this one paragraph from the ACLU. Finally, purely on a drafting level, we find that the ordinance is extremely difficult to follow. Its confusing and repetitive wording, along with its perplexing inventory of dozens of state statutes and unsighted ordinances, leaves a reasonable person without a clear understanding of exactly what is prohibited. Indeed, the ordinance is so broadly worded, it would appear to subject to penalties a driver who pulls their car over on the side of the road to nap before continuing on their way. So, you know, thi- this document, however you are classifying it tonight, God help us if it ever becomes an ordinance. As my old buddy and God rest his soul, Joe Panga would say, this has become a lawyer's dream, apparently, where they're just spending hundreds and hundreds of hours to come up with verbiage and language, whether it really meets the true test of the law and allows us to deal with this in a more responsible and humane way. So I I suggest this thing, as the letter indicates, be withdrawn and and be reworked if it's really going to be entertained and be done much more thoughtfully and seriously. There's, there's too much missing from this document that's only going to invite legal challenges and embarrassment to this community. And we should attempt to address this problem in a more collaborative way with community, religious organizations and the support of of our state delegation and the governor. They have continued to walk away from this duty. And as some of you may now know, we are in discussions with attorneys to obtain a writ of mandamus in order to order and direct the Interagency Council on Homelessness, which has failed in its responsibility for eight years in dealing with this issue, to do their job. Those individuals, eighteen of them, including the Lieutenant Governor, are identified in that law and they have a duty, as a result of their oath, to fulfill their, that mandate, which was to develop a state strategic plan and end homelessness in Rhode Island. They walked away from it in two sixteen. And now we have the result of this and and we're expected, individual municipality by municipality, to have to deal with it. It's outrageous. You should join us in the community in seeking the writ of mandamus so that the state officials who are required to address this thing in a more resourceful way, do it. Instead, you know, where's the leadership and where is the real, we can't criminalize our way out of this. You don't have the cops, you don't have the E M T guys. I mean, thi- thi- I mean, this is nice, but it's not going to get us there. It's only going to complicate things and we're going to wind up looking like buffoons and we shouldn't be there. I mean, we we should set an example with the new Housing Secretary, with the governor, when he comes back from vacation, he should be here dealing with this. How does he answer to the people who are on the bike path tonight? Doesn't happen, you know. So I I just ask again that the better angels that we have inside of us, that we deal with this in a more responsible way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ben. I I kind of have to echo a lot of the sentiments from Vinnie that we're not going to arrest our way out of this. And even if, even if this was the ordinance that we used, it's really not enforceable. It's almost like some of those ordinances, do we have enough, we don't really have enough manpower to go out there and really to really eliminate all the tents in the entire town. I just don't think it's really possible to do. I mean, if somebody wants to correct me if I'm wrong, I don't, I don't think we have enough, even if, even if we wanted to, I don't think it's possible. First, let me speak on, you know, we talked about the task force and the chief came up here and said, you know, doing the actual tour of the sites, they're able to find out what's needed. The town is more involved than ever now. We have been very involved over the past year and a half to two years, where we were having conference calls on almost every Monday. I know Mary Beth and myself were on there, trying to come up with solutions. So the town is very passionate and and very concerned about the person who's living in those encampments, and we want to make sure it's safe, we want to make sure it's clean. We want to make sure the neighborhoods are safe and clean for the the residents who are living here. So it's, it's not a time where we just say, get them out and we don't want them here. We, as a department heads and and task force and all the groups that are trying to help, are getting closer and closer to figuring it out. Now, is December second a deadline? We would like to set that date. We set that date. But if there's individuals that need help with alcoholism and all that, let's try to get them that help. That's the first step, you know. It's not just drugs and alcohol, it's it's abuse, it's whatever it may be. But every person, and we said it here last time, has their own story. But there's different stories and different circumstances. And there's going to be people who don't want the help. And that's where we need to really push back. If somebody doesn't want the help and doesn't want, and wants to live on town property and destroy it, then they should not be welcome. That's, that's what we were saying three hours, three and a half hours last meeting. Also, all all encampments are really not created equally. I think that some of these issues out there are terrible and it's, it's also dangerous for our police, fire. If we expect our D P W to go out there and clean it, it's, it's going to be a mess. And I, and I just want to state, you know, and Jay, you said it numerous times. Every time we talk about this, we kick the can down the road, we ignore it, we don't do nothing about it, we just sit here and discuss it. Well, we finally said we're going to do something about it and now some people want to kick the can down the road so we can be here next year doing the same conversation.
Why can't you just do what I asked, like, give them bags? It's cheaper and let them clean it and put it in the bucket.
We've given dumpsters, we've given bags, we've given.
Well, let's, let's do it again. Let's try it again. And you did say last week that they would be arrested. You did say that last week.
I specifically said, I don't want to see anybody get arrested, because if that person has an opportunity to get a job and if that record is going to stop them from getting a job, what disservice did we do?
I was here last week. No.
I'm telling you what I said, if nobody wants to believe that.
It was said that they would get arrested, they could be on the property and it's up to the building or the the landlord to get them up, but if they do something criminal, they're going to get arrested.
Two different situations.
But they're pushing them to get, they're pushing them.
They're talking about two different situations. This is town property we're talking about, this ordinance. Now, if they're on private property.
It's up to the landlord or the building.
It's not up to this council to deal with.
Right.
The council is responsible for town property. Okay, if they're on private property, that could be a trespassing order, that could be something else that has nothing to do with us. So yes, they could be asked to leave, or if they're on private property with permission, there's actually nothing the town could do at that point.
That's right.
So that's what I tried to explain. I don't want to see one person get arrested and not have an opportunity to get a job because of that arrest. I made that very. Unless, unless they're doing something that's illegal, not just for being homeless.
Exactly, but right now they're getting pushed and I don't think it's fair. They're getting harassed and I feel like they're getting harassed till December second, where they're going to be already aggravated and then they're getting ready to go fight back. And I told them, don't fight.
I know one situation about sneakers. A kid was playing down at the basketball courts down in the. River Point. River Point. He turned around and sneakers were gone. They filed a police report. So yes, they probably were looking for the kid's sneakers that were playing basketball and he turned around to find them gone.
Can I tell you the story that the police officer said to him? Somebody was stealing, somebody stole a Gendron. That's why he wanted to check out his sneaker. I know the guy personally, he's a friend of mine. He called me up and told me about it. He's getting harassed by the cops. I said, what for? He said the cop came up to him and asked him, he wants to see his sneakers. He said, what for? He said, I just want to see his sneakers. I said, all right, check. He checked the sneaker, he said, no, that's not you. He says, so what happened? He goes, because somebody stole a Gendron. That's what the story was, because it happened to him. I'll bring him in. You can ask.
I'm good, thank you. Any other public comment? Just state your name and address for the record.
Sarah Tuckett, Rhode Island. Obviously, I don't live in West Warwick, but I have worked in West Warwick for many years doing street outreach. I no longer conduct street outreach in a professional way, but like to come out in my personal time when I can, just to qualify. I know a lot of the concerns around the encampments have to do with legal, illegal activity, issues of sanitation, disruption, noise, you name it. And I just can't help but think of the obvious with that is that those all go away when people get housed, right? You're seeing all that take place outside because they have nowhere else to go. And like the other folks who so gracefully spoke before me, if you keep pushing people around, that's still not going to solve the problem. You're just moving them to a different block or a different neighborhood where the same exact issue is going to repeat itself and forever with no real solution. I'm not in favor of this ordinance. It doesn't, it doesn't create any positive avenues for people to access housing. It's vague in its approach in saying that the council or the town will work with individuals. Even if the town were to work with individuals to locate and find shelter or housing, they merely do not exist in our state. They are not to the capacity that we need them. I know a lot of folks are talking about substance use and alcohol use. Yeah, it's true that some people are not interested in treatment, because every time they go to treatment, they come back out and they have to live in a tent in the woods. So for me, I'm a person in recovery. If I was living outside, number one, I would absolutely be drinking to numb that pain. And two, if I went to treatment, what is the point? What is the point of me turning my life around when I'm going to have to go back outside into a tent? And then regards to the needles, there are needle exchange programs that come into West Warwick and dispose of those needles. In my experience when going out there, I have not ever seen it to be a major problem in the town of West Warwick. I'm sure someone has seen once in their life before, but I've never seen it be a large problem. Tonight, I haven't heard any real solutions to the problem and how to address the housing issue in West Warwick and what we're actually going to do before December second, because I can guarantee you, nobody's going to get housed between now and December second. They probably won't even find sustainable shelter. Most shelters are short-term or for intermediate, you're only in there overnight and then you're out in the morning. So none of these really feel like it's going to get to the issue and we're going to keep spinning our wheels over and over again. And you're going to have a higher crime rate in West Warwick, because you're going to keep arresting people that have nowhere else to go. I know you said you don't want to arrest people, but that's ultimately what ends. I know you said you don't wanna arrest people, but that's ultimately what ends up happening. Um, and I would just like to see people get housed. It's not, um, these are everyone's neighbors. Whether you wanna admit it or not, these aren't people coming from different towns. Most of these people are from West Warwick themselves. Um, and I would like to see better support of our neighbors. Um, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Derek Lee, sixty-two Andrews Avenue. We're losing track of the entire topic here. The topic is the health and well-being of our citizens and our children. These people are living in camps, at fields, at places where children play. We're losing track of the entire situation. Okay? Yes, I'm compassionate. They're homeless. They need a place to live. They don't need a place to live where children are at play, where families are trying to do family activities. I experienced a situation last week. I'm working in my building behind River Point. I hear sirens and sirens and sirens. I'm like, man, that place on fire. I go back there cause I hear the air brakes. I sit in my truck and I watch. It's a Saturday. You've got families on the softball field. You've got families in the playground. You've got families on the soccer field and you've got apparatus all around that place because somebody OD'd. That's what the situation is here and that's what these people are missing. Number two, all these advocates in here, listen to them. They're from Pawtucket. They're from Smithfield. They're from here. They're from there. How about coming from West Warwick? None of them from West Warwick. If they're so worried about what's going on in West Warwick, take them home with you. It's that easy. Bring them to your community. They're not all bad people. I get it. However, I know not one of yous will probably take a walk through River Point right now without an officer or somebody that's gonna stand up to help protect you. I'm gonna tell you that right now. I'll go through there if you wanna come with me. It's a mess. They're losing track. They're trying to throw dust at you guys. The dust is, it's a safety factor for the people of this community, the children of this community. You have a riverwalk down there that the town invested money in for families to go enjoy, for kids to ride their bikes. You can't do that right now. And then the island, you need to literally take a bulldozer and push that over because you're not gonna put your D P W guys down there. And I'm gonna tell you hazmat people are probably not gonna wanna go down there either. It's a mess. That's what this is about. This is about what they're doing to our community, what they're doing to our town facilities. Not what they're doing, living in their tents, sleeping, whatever. I get that. Everybody's down and out once in a while or most people. If that's what they gotta do, that's what they do. It's not those people that are causing this problem. It's people that don't want the help. It's people that wanna do drugs. It's people that wanna whatever. They don't want the help. I'm an employer. They don't want a job. It's not, it's not difficult. It's not difficult. There are select few. Yeah, there's, I know the family they're talking about behind, uh, the manor. The kid worked for me back in the days. Very good kid. Got caught up in drugs. That's where he ended up. We tried helping him time and time again. He worked for me at least six to seven times, different occasions. Didn't want the help, but I gave him a job until he couldn't handle the job no more. Until he started bringing it to the job. When you bring it to the job and it's in my truck, you don't have a job. That's what this is about. This is not about all the homeless. Let's feel bad for them. Yeah, we feel bad for the ones that are legitimately homeless and down and out and need the, the help. We can't feel bad for all of them, but it's the bad ones that are not making it easy for the good ones. And you have to do it as a full slate. You can't pick and choose. Now, the ordinance, I mean, for me, if I'm gonna write an ordinance or law, I'm not gonna target the homeless and put it in Roya. Encampments is a different word. It should have been encampments on every line item, not homeless. Homeless. You're targeting a specific group. He gets paid good money. You should have known that. Right? You're targeting a group. That's why they're all here. That's why you got the media here. Cause you're targeting a group. You're not targeting campsites. Now, I don't know how you backpedal. You put it out into the public. I would have never put out the public either until the draft was read through and probably homeless was taken out. Cause now, now you're kinda stuck. So as a taxpayer and a business owner in this town, I still gotta deal with it at River Point because they're gonna win and y'all gonna lose. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
My name is Umberto Gomez. I'm from Texas. I'm not from here. Uh, I came here for my lady. She's from here. Family's from here. I only came here just to ask for her father's hand in marriage. Things didn't turn out all right. Kicked me out into the streets. I lived for a while, slept at the twenty-four hour, twenty-four seven laundromat. I don't know if y'all know where that is down over there. Where is that? I don't know the address. I'm not from around here, but I would sleep for about almost a month because I didn't know where else to go. If it wasn't for the heads helping me out, I wouldn't have a tent. I wouldn't have where I could be comfortable to sleep after I come out of work from Aloha Pizza. I work at Aloha Pizza and try and make some money, get some food. I don't have food stamps. I don't know. I didn't go about that. To me, that was only a female thing, but now I guess it's both. I don't know. I don't know these things. Nobody tells me these things. Nobody teaches me this. So I just go with work, get your money, get food, survive. I understand everybody has issues with some homeless men and women that don't want the help. I understand that. That's very understanding. But the ones that do, like maybe you said earlier, when they notify us saying, hey, you guys gotta clean up your act. You can walk where, where we are. We have a very clean area. Now, you mentioned about Simon having issues about garbage, about twenty-two thousand or something like that. It's like she said, or someone else said, why not ask us to clean it up? You can ask us and we'll, we'll help whoever group goes to help up and clean up for free. I mean, we don't, I only work some days. I have some other days that are off and I can help clean up. That Wendy has asked me a few times, hey, can you clean this? Hey, can you clean that? I got you, Wendy. I cleaned the, the needles that were under the train. I cleaned those. The trash that was under the train, I cleaned those. Not asking for money, not asking for anything else. Just, hey, let me know. Some of us want to get out of this situation. We don't like it. But if you're attacking or saying, hey, camping is not allowed in public property? That's all the camping, which you stayed or said permission from, for a public's, uh, property. If you have permission from public property, you can be there. Is that right?
Private property.
Private, private. But did you say public earlier or no? Okay. So how do you even go about any of that? I mean, it's like they said, the problem's gonna be going somewhere else. I'm not asking to, I, I don't, I'm not very familiar with all this. I'm not very, I'm not even from here. But if I'm gonna get told, hey, I'm sorry, you need to leave. I'm from Texas. I don't even know where to go. You know, I, I, we're stuck out here because the situation just threw us at hand, you know? Um, I've been homeless for a while. That's really all that it is to it. If it wasn't for Wendy helping me with a tin, a blanket and, you know, some extra clothes, pairs of clothes. I didn't even have money to wash, uh, my clothes yet. I was sleeping in the laundromat. I appreciate that. I don't even know what really is the real issue. If you just need someone to clean up some trash, just talk to us. Some of us are just gonna be like, you know what? Yeah. Some of us will say no. I understand that. But some of us that do wanna make, hey, let's help each other out, then okay, help each other out. Hey, can you go to this camp? I know it's not your camp. Can you clean it up? Just let me know. Hey, I work Wednesday. I can't do it Wednesday, but I could do it Friday. Hey, I work Friday. I could do it Sunday. If I'm not working Sunday or I'm not helping or I'm not doing anything else. You know what I mean? If, if we can come in understanding like, hey, you know what? There's a trash over here. And if it continues to make a trash, then you know what? Fine. Whoever's staying there penalty, gets the penalty of, hey, you know what? You, this is just trash everywhere. You know, not everybody's doing this, but you all are. I mean, come on, if you guys got, you know, maybe a week or two, it's not clean, then go ahead and do what you need to do. But to the ones that are trying their best, the ones that sleep outside when it's cold, the ones that are trying to get food, the ones that are tired of canned food, okay? They're trying. They didn't, they didn't even tell us. They told us about a day and, actually the day before they told us I started cleaning. Ask my lady, I started cleaning just because. I didn't do anything. I didn't have any work. I said, you know what? I'm bored. I don't do anything else. I only smoke marijuana. I don't touch nothing else. I don't like, I don't, I got way too much responsibility for that. But it's like they mentioned, some do want the help, some don't want the help. I understand that. That's a very delicate balance. But all I'm here for is just to explain my situation and some that relate to it, hey, you know what? This is, you were just put in a bad situation at a bad time and you're just trying to do your best to get out of it. Like I said, I work at Aloha Pizza. I, I, I only work a couple of days. Maybe anytime they call me, hey, we need an extra person, I'll go. You know, I, I do my best. I try to clean up around as much as I can. It is a pain in the ass, I admit, but it has, someone has to do it. And if y'all don't talk to us, we don't know nothing. You know, you don't, you know what? We don't even know each other. You can come up to me, hey, can you don't mind cleaning this and this and that? I'll do it, but if they keep doing it, then penalize them.
I know you're from Wendy because I adopted the spot where the caboose was and she told me you cleaned out from underneath it. Cause I thank you, cause usually it's, it's usually myself and my wife and my kids that are under there cleaning.
I just worry about kids too, trying to climb on the train. Thank you.
You can, I'm gonna let her go next. Just, just state your name for the record. That's.
Hi, I'm Sophia years old. I'm Sophia. Sorry. I'm ten years old. Um, when I was four years old, I had to go into a homeless shelter because our landlord, uh, she didn't like us because of, um, my brother's dad, my stepfather. Um, we had to go into the family shelter and when I was five years old, we moved out into Bristol. Um, and it was brought to my attention that, um, the police have been tearing apart, uh, tents for the, um, that homeless people sleep in. And I didn't like that because, um, I like to help the homeless and I have a quote, no act of kindness, no matter how small it is, is ever wasted. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Lee, sixty-two Andrews Avenue. The gentleman right here, I'm offering you a job right now. You come and see me? And I'll give you a job. So you show that you want some help. Now, the rest of your advocates here, can anybody tell me?
John, 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 address, address the council if you, and then you can.
I'd like to know how many of these advocates have a track record of helping somebody? And like you said, and I said it last week, I'm so tired of, we just always do, kick it down the road. We need to do something. Like my son said, this has nothing to do with the homeless quote. This has to do with the protection of the town and the people in the encampment. We've all said, including our officials, it is dangerous. It's unsafe. It's your responsibility to make it safe. The only way you can make it safe is they can't live there. Okay? It's a sad fact of life. But like this gentleman here, and like my son told you, we've hired so many people for different reasons. You try to give them a chance, some of them make it to the finish line. Some of them make it to the first paycheck. Some of them die on you. But you can't put them all in one group. All right? And there is a very large group, okay? And I'm no social worker, that just don't want the help. They don't want it. You've said it. Other people have said it. But the avocation that goes here, they roll it up in one ball. I don't think that's very professionalism of them. They have to have the knowledge if they're in the field that there are areas that you are never gonna save. And when the priest was here the other day, I said that. God can't save them at this point. We can only save what is savable. Like I believe this gentleman is just by listening to him. Okay? And I have no problem putting them on my payroll, but if he fails me, I have no problem getting rid of them. But at least I was able to give him a chance. I've had him come through. Well, you are never gonna do anything with them. Never. And we have to face that fact. It might be sad, but you gotta face it. Help? Who can get help? The rest of them, it's, it's a, it's collateral damage. What do you wanna do with it? Unless you wanna take them home, you wanna take them home, you wanna put them in your houses? I think these advocates, the way they talk, they should take them home. Cause they're saving the world, but how come we got this problem? You can disrespect me all she wants, but that's all I've got to say. I really would like to see this resolved, but we need to stick with what we started off to do. The town, you cannot be responsible for these lives. Or someday, we're gonna have one hell of an incident. I pray to God it never happens. Because it's well-known of the dangers. If something happens there, we're liable. Thank you.
If it continues in the crowd, I want to ask whoever's doing it, please leave.
My name is Anna Coy. I live on West Street and we have all these activists back there. Like they, they, they claim to be social workers or whatever, but they had them like. They, they have failed. I mean, the chief said he went back there, found two people right away that need detox. But the other issue is a lot that you, you should think about the children. We've heard from a child. There are children in West Warwick also. Do you know the age restriction to give out free needles? Do you know? Anybody know? I bet you know, cause you don't miss a Thunder Miss meeting, do you? Do you, do you know? There's no age restriction. How many feet do they have to be from a school to give out needles? There's no restriction. There's none. And, and these people are getting all their free needles and they're gonna stay in that situation, but that's the future of the children too. When I was younger in the eighties, we didn't get needles, so we didn't use needles. The only people that used needles were Vietnam vets that nobody would bother, but they're making it like, oh, look, Joy, let's put little rainbow stickers on it and there's no age restriction. You cannot let the town go like this because of the kids. Plus there was somebody here one day saying that some rapist on meth comes out near Macy Quinn. And, and it seems like that, that they should be outside with protest signs, not in here. But you need to worry about the people. It is sad. Homeless people is sad, but they haven't triaged them, separated veterans, drug addicts. They haven't done that. And now it's all on us, on the town. We have to do that. You have to worry about the children that live in the town. They shouldn't be walking down the bike path with somebody on meth that rapes people in the woods. Like what is this? The whole conversation is about the advocates that came from Bristol and everywhere. Like you need to worry about our kids. You need to find out what are the age restrictions? Can we make laws about that? Then in the town of West Warwick, you don't give kids needles. Yeah, it was on my street, West Street. As far as I know, we don't have a encampment, but there were needles on our street. And that, those things, it's never gonna get better unless you end that. And they're not gonna solve the problem because they'll lose funding.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I'm just gonna say a few words off the cuff here. I have been cyclically homeless since two thousand and nine and I have lived in every single town in this state. Okay? For all those naysayers, I live in Bristol and I might present like a very nice person in my very nice hair and my Tiffany's jewelry, but there's a reason for that. I am the face of homelessness. Okay? So I am an advocate and I help people on a daily basis, whether it's navigating the HUD system, looking for a place to sleep, getting a woman who was just beaten into, uh, Lucy's Hearth because she doesn't have a place to stay with her children. That's what advocates do. They don't come up on stage and offer people jobs because they wanna be martyrs. So I am here because homelessness is an issue and I'm very concerned that passing this legislation is going to follow suit for every other community that wants to turn a blind eye to what is going on in this state. That's why I'm here. That's why I'm concerned. It affects every single one of us, every single person. My children and I have been devastated and like I explained, I volunteer for the coalition, but the coalition has just rescinded a job offer for a community-based program that I was looking for. And when they rescinded that job offer, I went to the, um, Warren Buffett House, DHS, uh, Women's Resource Center, all, and Lucy's Hearth, all within that week because I had no gas in my car, um, no internet service, no cell phone service. Every single financial organization with my nice clothes and my nice jewelry turned me away and my family. Every single one of those organizations. And if they're turning me away and my family who are in need, who is? Who, who's not needing these programs? So that's just all I have to say. It needs to be, we need to work on a program as a community. I think that gentleman who came up here was like, it was mind-blowing to me to listen to his story. He came here from Texas and he's doing his job. Like if you wanna see community at its forefront, that's where you should go. Those people are working together. They're cleaning together. They're cooking together. They're, they're working as a, as a unit. It's not all they're shooting up and swinging needles around. It's work, work as a community to try to find a. work as a community to try to find a resolution. That's what we should be doing here, not just getting upset and really like try to found a foundation to try to work as a community. I heard something about, there's a field in the back that was by the young woman, uh, there's a field in the back. What about like proposing somewhere that, someone where people can go and have some type of community, where they can come together. We can set up space for them so that they don't feel like they have to be pushed from one place to another. Where they're not in maybe peripheral vision, but we can work on this. It's not kicking the can down the road, but it's not criminalizing the people who are here and living. They still have to live. And yes, I do help the homeless and I lived in Providence my entire life. I'm not uncomfortable. This is what I do.
Alright, um, I, I just wanna reiterate, and I wanna just have this another three-hour meeting tonight over this subject. So, please, this, I wanna cut the comments down, if you've been up already, this'll be the last time.
This'll be the last time, I apologize. I just wanted to correct some misinformation, um, particularly around needle exchange. Uh, the reason with the needle exchange, the comment about the eighties and having a restriction on needle exchange services, we don't wanna do that again because in the eighties, we had a problem with an HIV epidemic, we're trying to avoid that. The reason why we're not in an HIV epidemic is because we have needle exchange programs and other communicable diseases, so I just wanna nip that in the bud before that snowballs into anything else ever again. Um, and I just wanna reorient this conversation because some people are speaking about other human beings, like they're sub human and throwaway and monsters. As someone who did work here and did help a lot of people, I could show you my rap sheet, you'd probably be impressed. Um, people who are serving the community aren't doing nothing. So I don't know where that piece of information came from. They are working very hard for very little money and a lot of times volunteer. A lot of folks here who are advocating are volunteer, who don't get paid anything. So I wanna clarify that too because it's disrespectful to the people out here who are trying their best to solve for a problem that would also benefit everyone in this community. It's, we can't talk about people like they're throwaway. These are human beings. There are some people in this audience today who are experiencing homelessness and you are dogging them like they don't matter or they don't deserve a home because they use drugs. Also, just because someone used drugs does not mean they don't deserve a home. I don't know where you would get that logic from. They're not, like I said, subhuman. Treat people with respect.
Dennis Cantel, uh, LaGrice Avenue, West Warwick. Um, I'm, I'm coming up here because I've been homeless. I was homeless in my teen years for two years. Uh, let me tell you, it wasn't because of advocates helping me out, because I had plenty of people that wanted to help me when I was younger. And I didn't wanna hear it from any of them. I wanted to do my own thing. And if it wasn't for me helping myself, I would've never gotten out of that situation. I'm also a, a disabled vet. I'm not a hundred percent disabled, so let me tell you, I'm living on a, a minimal income. Everyone keeps on talking about, it's a homeless issue, it's a homeless issue. No, it's a housing issue. We ha- we have problems with all of these multifamily houses being sold out to all these large congru- of population that has the money to uh get housing vouchers for all these migrants coming into this town. How many of our students are now Spanish-speaking? Where's that money coming from? We have to take this out of our tax time. My taxes just went up, guess what? So did my mortgage. Me as a disabled vet, living off of my payment, guess what? I'm having to cut more and more things out of my life. And I'm not, I'm just barely eating. I'm not even leaving my house because I can't pay for the gas. I, i- it's ridiculous. I mean, I understand people, people go through hard times, and, but drugs are not the answer. And if you're staying on the streets because you're doing drugs, you're never going to want to help yourself. Because you are constantly in that state of euphoria. You are constantly trying to get away from the life that you're in, that you don't wanna take part in. That's what you're doing. And trust me, I, I've had friends that have died from drugs. I've had friends that have come back from drugs. And it's never an easy thing. Now that it's becoming more and more prominent of the mental issues that we're having in today's society, people don't know whether they're a girl or a boy. People, boys dressing as girls, girls, I mean, girls have dressed as boys for decades, but I mean, it's we're so off of the factual tracks that we're just coming up with excuses at this point. And I don't see anything happening. I, I loved it, I keep on, you poor man. Uh, I, I text you all the time.
Okay.
Uh, uh, about all the
Yes.
alcohol bottles and stuff along that line. Let me tell you, if they're out there to commit crimes, they're out there to commit crimes. When the police are out there to protect the people from the crimes. And we do need to do something. Uh, I'll agree, just pushing them from place to place isn't gonna help anything. Um, but what we need to do is we need to get with the higher-ups over in the uh State House and tell them they need to stop uh sending all their migrants to us so that we can actually have some housing for us. Cause when you stop putting thirty thousand people in a society of sixty thousand people, guess what? You're gonna displace a third of those. Uh, i- is it our job to take care of the world, or is it our job to take care of our communities and ourselves?
Oh, I will say this on the council's behalf, it's our job to protect this community.
Considering we pay taxes, eh, that is correct. A- and what, what, another thing that the migrant influx is also doing is taking away our lower jobs.
Hold on, sorry, I just wanna stop you there. As far as going about the migrant community and so on and so forth, that's, that's maybe a national issue, and I know it was brought up here last time that in West Warwick. I'm not sure how many migrants are in here causing homeless in West Warwick. I, I'm not sure, so, and, and I can't answer that question, but
I have
I, I know for a fact that homeless has been up over thirty percent over last year. It's up over thirty percent versus last year where it is this year.
Yeah.
And
Within the last two years, I've had four houses, four multifamily houses, all of a sudden turn Spanish-speaking, straight up. In my, just in my general vicinity.
Whether they're Spanish-speaking, English-speaking, non-English speaking.
I just had to call ICE on one of them because their children, one of their child was peeping into windows of houses.
Okay, but that has nothing to do with the homeless situation right now.
They're taking the housing.
No, I, 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 I think what the biggest problem with the housing is the cost of housing. When you're selling a two-family house for almost five hundred thousand dollars, the landlord has to make that rent.
Granted.
Okay?
Granted.
That's where it is. People cannot afford to live. I don't care if it's English, non-English, whatever it is. You can't afford twenty eight hundred dollars a month to rent an apartment. So again, let's keep this on to the homeless and not Spanish-speaking or whoever.
Well, I'm just bringing it to a point that we have multifamily houses with legal immigrants in our neighborhoods right now. Displacing West Warwickans. People who have grown up here, as the advocates keep on saying, but, but we don't matter. As long as the immigrants can come in and take our houses and take our jobs and just push us out. Guess what? Uh, this ward, uh ward Jason is gonna be a Democrat come up next uh election, come up this election, I'll guarantee it. Because you're gonna have all kinds of Spanish people who are already, who are already.
The election is going on and I think the councilman is running unopposed, so I don't, I'm not sure what you're talking.
No, 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 I, I'm talking about, they're going to be voting. They have already started. Mail-in ballots are people are being registered to vote.
Thank you.
Hi, Kathy Schultz. I do not live in West Warwick, but my family has a name on the churches here. And my family immigrated here and they lived here, but many, many, I'm an honorary, aren't I? Thank you. Um, I really just wanna come up here and, again, like a broken record, say that there are some solutions that we all have been working on. Um, I wanna thank the town manager, um, and even when you were the former police, um, chief. Um, I wanna thank the town council, um, for continuing to have these conversations. I've mentioned it a couple of times. Um, I do think that this is a entire Kent County issue. The forty-four people that, um, Chief Aron had mentioned, I bet you there's some more over in the Coventry line and also on the Warwick line, along the bike path. Um, I had said last time when I was here, the solution is a twenty-four-seven navigation center. Um, I know that you all have been talking about this. I'm not saying that this is all the towns, but what I'm saying as a solution is continue to talk to your abutting cities and towns, continue to try to come up with a Kent County solution. You know, some kind of regional solution. Because the reality is, is, and we heard this, and Vinny is completely on point. The fact is, is that the ordinance that you want to do is, has a lot of holes in it. Um, and it's going to create a inhumane way of dealing with the situation. I'm not gonna even talk about drug use or drug not use. I've said it before. I am a person with lived, with lived experience. I'm a person who was a single mother, who was evicted probably eight to nine, ten times. And lived in West Warwick because I couldn't afford my rent, even when I wasn't using drugs, okay? I don't, this is not, I know that we talk about the needles and we talk about the harm reduction and we talk about all the stuff when it comes to substance use. We talk about people who want treatment and then, you know, at that day, at that moment, they want treatment. But the reality is, we heard from somebody who actually did outreach here, that you can get somebody into treatment. Matter of fact, I'm gonna quote somebody who is experiencing homelessness at our, one of our remembrances, and the state was here at that time. I was working here in West Warwick. And he got on the mic and what he said was, we need help. We're dying. He's one of the people that you all ran into when you were out there. He was in a shelter. He even maybe had a voucher, but he couldn't find a unit. And he's back outside again. Better yet, he might be in jail because of whatever. His name got wrong, he might be in jail, guess what? He loses a voucher. I've said this. And what he said is, we need help. And even if I go to treatment or I go to detox, I end up back out here again. What's the point of going? So I just wanna remind you all of that. There is a solution, and that is a regional solution. That is having conversations with the other cities and towns, talking to Vinny, listening to some of the advice that he's given you. And really thinking about how can we get some type of s- something here in the Kent County area. Because the reality is, there is nothing. There is not a shelter. You have ThunderMist, you have Thrive. And you have outreach that comes here. It's, there's not enough resources in this community. And I do think, and I wanna also say what Gail keeps saying, we need to work together. I know you all have been, but let's work with the people that are actually out there. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, John. I just wanna reiterate, you know, Vin keeps asking if it's the first reading, and yes, it is on the agenda of his first reading. And I just wanna point out, this council has seen drafts of this. But we can't sit there behind the scenes and talk amongst the five of us to discuss this. It's illegal. It's called a rolling quorum. If anybody's involved in politics, you would know that. We have to discuss this in public, and any changes that we want to make, we would have to make it in public. I cannot sit here and say, hey Jay, I think this should be changed, Mary Beth, I think that, and we can all agree behind the scenes.
Couldn't do that, but we
It's, wait a minute, hold on. It's, it's the point of your election laws and your laws as a politician. You have to follow those laws. So, that's why we are here talking about it tonight as a collaborative group. We had three and a half hours last time to talk about it. We directed our town manager and our town solicitor to put something together. Now, first reading, we can make changes. If any, and I'm sure everybody up here has been listening and wants to discuss this. Okay? We can make those changes in those, those suggestions. Go back to the drawing board, but it's up to this council publicly to talk about. That is why it's here before us tonight. Thank you. Procedural?
So, so you, you obviously can either propose some amendments tonight.
Yep.
Or approve it as is, or direct someone or some people to work on this and then come back. And if you do come back, how is the, would an amended ordinance, is the clock reset?
No, if we take no action tonight.
Right.
Then it doesn't act as a first reading. If we take some action tonight, amend and approve, that is the actual first reading. It would come before the council for a second reading. After the second reading, that would be proved and twenty days after would go into.
Yeah, just trying to understand.
That's the procedure.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the council?
So, after listening to everybody tonight, is, this is a lot to digest. And obviously, the five of us make that, make that decision to move forward. I agree, something needs to be done. I think we've all talked about that. Um, the one thing though, you know, and, and looking at this and listening to everybody and taking notes, I'm for taking this back, looking at this again, on my own, and making any suggestions to the solicitor and to the manager without involving any of you. And I would can, I would suggest that we all do that. And at that point, that comes back to us, just like it did, and we can sit here and have a true first reading.
I, I don't disagree with you, Jay. I mean, I, I am not prepared to, to vote on this as it's presented. Haven't had the time to, to really, wanted to hear what people had to say.
And this is, we get it's a delicate issue, I just cut you off, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Go ahead, finish.
Sorry, um, it is, it is a delicate issue, we all realize that. Um, and I'm not gonna elaborate anymore, cause I think we've talked about it enough. Obviously, there are, there are different sides to this. The only, my main concern though is, is listening to some people is, is safety. And that's whether you're a child or an adult, you're out in an encampment, or you're walking on the street. And the concerning thing is, some of the reports we get from, from Chief Levine, which we get every week, on, i- it's, it's a report on each of our wards, so we can condense it. And that doesn't just, it's not about, um, it's about everything. Larceny, breaking in, a car crash. Um, some of the reports that we get from some of the encampment areas are very disturbing and they're unsafe. And some involve needles, um, which is a big topic. Um, some also involve assault. So, um, and the way some of the things, so it is concerning. But as councilpeople, our role is to respond to our citizens. And that doesn't mean, that doesn't matter where you live. So, and we all get calls for different reasons. And at that point, you know, you have to address those. It's a concern to, it's a, if somebody calls me, for example, I think I can speak for the whole council. Because they have a concern, it becomes our concern. That's our job. That's why we were elected. And our job is also to listen. So, sometimes I say things to people and it's very, very point. I'm not going to give you the answer that you wanna hear. But this is the result that came up, and this is the reason why. So, um, tonight, I, I, along with everyone, didn't say a, a whole heck of a lot. We wanted to listen, um, to everyone. And, um, I'm gonna take this back and dissect it and put any of my thoughts to the manager and to the, the solicitor. So.
We as a council last time charged the solicitor and the town manager with a, a task probably wasn't, truthfully, could be done correctly in two weeks, and we charged them with that. It was a, a valiant effort. It starts the ball rolling. It certainly has created some conversation. I don't feel we're kicking it, uh, any can down the road. I think that the task force should continue. I think that's important, that we're out engaging, uh, at the encampments. I for one, am in no way, shape or form in favor of criminalizing homelessness. I just, I, I, that's not something I'll ever vote for. I just can't. So, I do believe in someone talked about weeding out, if you will. And we talked last time about, it's about the behavior. It's about, and if you're doing something illegal, you should be arrested. I don't think anybody disagrees with that. But that doesn't mean that everyone, that is in the unfortunate situation of living in an encampment is a criminal. And I just, I, uh, so I think we have to think about all that. Tim, I think you, you did yeoman's work to get it to us when you did. It's a starting point. I, I think we do have to listen to, and we'd be foolish not to take the help of the ACLU. Excuse me, the ACLU and the groups that have offered help to us. We might as well all work together to figure something out, so.
But please understand though, if people are doing something that is going to harm someone else.
Absolutely.
Or, or not abide by the, the laws, then the police are instructed to go out and instructed to do their job, and they will. And if somebody, the problem is, and anytime somebody is told no, there's a problem. But you can't, you can't be drunk on the sidewalk. You know, you, you can't go to the bathroom on this bench. You can't do it. And when they go to enforce that, all of a sudden, there's a problem and they're being picked on. No, you can't do it. It's that simple. And I, I'm sorry, but I can't defend that.
Whether you live in, in an encampment or in a house-
You live down the street. It doesn't matter. You can't do it. It's that simple.
That's correct.
And when those things are happening, you can't ignore those.
I agree.
And to me, that's not a homelessness issue at all. That's a be, and I've said it last week, many, or last meeting, many times. It's a behavior thing. You, you just can't do it.
We, we've just, I, I've reiterated this fact over and over. It's about being a good neighbor. You can be a good neighbor and be homeless. You can be a good neighbor. And I think a lot of the issues specifically for this town, I know it's become, uh, that we're the council's, council's anti-homeless, but if you, nobody wants to be living in the woods, I don't think. Most, most people do not wanna be. But if, if it's the ones that are causing issues, and especially, I have to say, we're kinda lumping all this together, and I know you said we have to, but I think it's, there's specific hotspots and areas in this town which are not only safe, unsafe for the unhoused, but they're unsafe for our police and fire that have to make calls down there. And it will be unsafe, and I will not support RDPW going down there to clean that up. So I'm gonna make that clear right now. I won't support them to go down there. If they really wanna push for it, and Jeff wants to come up here and push for that, but I think it's, it's gonna cost us more money. At, at some point, it'll have to be cleaned up. At some point, it's gonna be, need to be cleaned up. And I just-
And, and you've said that many times. My, my suggestion, and it's not a direction, and I don't know if this is okay, but you get with your advocate, Wendy, you're right here, organize this with Wendy. People at the, the different sites, clean up their mess, because it is their mess. And if there's something that we could provide bags, or gloves, or vests, that would be our contribution, is that okay to?
Sure it is.
Okay, so, so that's our part.
We have done it.
And we, we've done, but I'm saying it again, cause you're, you, you're really motivated to do it. But this has been done many times. So, and this is, again, this is beyond litter with a poker. This is, this is shovels and barrels and dumpsters. So just to make you aware, so everybody gets the big picture. It's not, you're going out there and picking up cigarette butts and you're picking up, you know, paper wrappers. This is, this is a lot.
And I think we would be naive-
But I'm sure Wendy would be happy to organize that as, as the town advocate.
I think we would be naive as a council to think that, and I, and I don't, and I know Dave talked about kicking the can down the road, but to think-
Wait, wait, before you say that, that's came from the two of you. That said, that alls we do is go round and around and around.
We do.
I only, I didn't say kicking the can down the road.
I'm sorry, we used that word.
It came from you two about going back and forth a few meetings ago and say, "Here we go. We're just kicking the can down the road. We're gonna talk about it and leave."
And we need to, and Jay, you said-
I'm gonna say it again. We're gonna be naive to think that we're gonna solve homelessness in the next eight weeks in West Warwick. I just think that's naive. I think the advocates, the advocates that we have in this community that have been working hard, we, it's not an easy job to, and they're out there, they're, they're very, uh, thankless, the job they do out there. And it's probably like banging their head against the wall sometimes, trying to get things done out there. So it is very difficult what they're doing out there.
And I made it very-
And I'm, and I'm not saying that, that you guys don't know that. I'm sure that you do. You've been involved long enough.
I made it very clear last meeting. There are people who are working 40 hours a week at EB or Plus who cannot afford housing.
Oh, you're right.
So, it's, we know it's a housing cost issue. There's nothing, any of us can up, up here do, to figure out how to lower rents in West Warwick, or any town in the state.
It's much higher than us.
The, the, the cost of housing, the cost to build housing today, you can't, a $10,000 foundation 15 years ago is now $20,000, $25,000 for the same foundation. So, the cost of housing itself is very expensive. So to create, you know, we have given tax breaks to builders. You know, we brought up Lip and Mill. He's looking at hopefully next summer to have 21 units affordable housing, open and ready and available. We have, as a council, have tried to do numerous things, housing-wise, whatever it may be. We have Factory Street Mill here. It is sold out. It's sold out in record time. Like, I couldn't believe in less than six months, they were fully rented here in West Warwick. And at, at a decent rate. You know, $1,600 to $1,800 a month was the going rent there. All rented, no problems. And if you work in there or ever go in there, it's all young individuals, mostly young individuals, that are trying to make ends meet and trying to start their lives. Again, we have talked about this over and over and over for the past three years here on this council. And then when I said about kicking the can down the road, it's because we talk about it, talk about it. We leave and don't ever discuss it again. That's why even last time, when we talked about December 2nd, it put a little fire under everybody to say, "Okay, let's get moving and not forget about it and not walk out." Because you know what? You might see five to 10 homeless people helped and resolved and hopefully on a pathway of getting them out of that situation. You know? Hey, if somebody comes up here and offers somebody a job and that person gets that job in, in six months from now, we hear, everything's great. And guess what? He's moving back to Texas with his bride and, and, and everything's great for him. That is wonderful. We succeeded. If we just ignore it and let it go and just let it keep populating and populating, guess what's gonna happen? Every community that is dealing with it, they're gonna come out of those communities and come to our community. So we do have to deal with our situations here in West Warwick. We cannot keep turning a blind eye at any given time. And again, going back to the police department, I have seen our police department at work. I've seen them working up at the gazebo. I see them get out of their cars, talk to the individuals. I see them get out, work with them, harassing. I don't see that happen. They might go up and, and listen, if somebody's stealing somebody's sneakers and they're looking for somebody's sneakers, then damn well gonna be looking for somebody's sneakers. Some poor kid who's working himself, trying to get his nice $200 sneakers, gets stolen. I'd want somebody to do their job too. As Councilman Lachardi said, if you're not committing the crime, then you don't have to worry about it. But you're committing crimes and you're doing things. If I stole somebody's sneakers, I'm not homeless. But if I did it, I expect to be investigated. Or if, if I have those sneakers on, I'm gonna be asked, "Why do I have those sneakers on?" It, it, that's, that's the common law. We can't keep turning blind eyes to people who are breaking the law. It's just not fair.
I completely agree. And, and I just, uh, I think what Kathy said is true. That, yes, we have to worry about West Warwick. We have to keep West Warwick residents safe. We need to push the state a little bit to help us out, because we can't do this on our own. And we can't, you know, we can talk about this every, at every meeting, but without some help from them. So I think we do need to have conversations at the state house level. I, I agree completely, and hopefully, we're a small state. We should be able to figure out homelessness as a state. And, and Kathy, it might be a, a regional. As you know, a lot of times, it's not in my backyard is the answer. So, um, we need to, we need to work as a, a group to get it done.
And I'd be more than happy to ask for a resolution that we can approve as a council to send to the state house, to our representatives. And, and, and I'd be more than happy to reach out to a couple of those representatives and say, "I need your support on this."
I will do the same, absolutely.
And I, I think that there's a, there's a way that we can be cognizant of the safety of the citizens that are the voters, and also be empathetic to those that aren't voters. Cause I feel like sometimes people, they go, "Well, they're not voters. Who cares?" I, I represent-
They're people.
I, 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 I'm not saying anybody in this council, but I, I definitely, from some of the comments I've heard, they're, they're all people, and whether they, they're able to cast a vote for you or not, I don't think it should make a difference.
No, I don't think, yeah, I don't think voters-
You've been patient.
Has much to do with it, you know? Obviously, part of this equation, and I wasn't gonna start with this, but part of this equation is the taxpayer, right? It's the taxpayer. What are we giving them for value in return for the money that we request and require of them every year? But I wanna get back to what my original statement was gonna be. And for those of you who've come up here tonight to speak, um, I want you to understand something. From me, I appreciate it. I understand both sides of the argument. I don't want you to think that you're not heard. I didn't hear one invalid thing here tonight, because there is no right or wrong here. Right? We can want to help those unfortunate people who don't have a place to live, while yet protecting the taxpayers and the citizens and the families and children of this community. That's where the difficulty lies, because it seems like when you're helping one, you're harming the other. And I think we do need to come up with a solution that helps all in this, in this terrible situation. So, I'm not gonna speak for anybody else, but what I will say is, if any, if my counterparts are up here or anything like me, this is not an issue that we think about every other Tuesday for a couple of hours. I find this issue more and more every day invading my thoughts. And I'm sure it's the same for everybody that's up here. You're at work, you're trying to concentrate on your job, but you're thinking, "What about this? What if we suggest that? What if we take this person's suggestion and work on that?" So i- it is a problem that we, we will continue to work on. I will reiterate what the council president said. In setting the date of December 2nd, look what we have here tonight. Look what we had last meeting. We have conversation. We have people working towards a common goal. And I'd like to thank everybody for keeping it civil, because that's the only way we're gonna get out of this. Because we can start slinging insults and that's not gonna help anybody. So, really, that's all I wanted to say. We're obviously not done here. This isn't gonna just, you know, we're not gonna adjourn and then this is solved. It's not. We have a lot of work in front of us. I think everybody up here is ready to take on that workload and do whatever we need to do. And we're not perfect. We're gonna make mistakes. It's going to be trial and error. Right? But again, something has to happen. Action needs to be taken. Otherwise, we are just kicking the can down the road and we don't wanna do that. And I, I liked Councilman Lachardi's suggestion of each of us taking this back, which we do all the time. Take this back, reflect upon it, and then provide our thoughts to either the manager or the, or the solicitor. And, um, we turn up with, for lack of a better term, a better product. And that's the goal here, and that's what I suggest we do.
And I just wanna point out and say, personally, if you have any, if we're taking this back tonight, that your suggestions go right to the town manager.
Okay.
And then he can talk to the group that met last week. I know you were on vacation, when most of that meeting happened. But if you can discuss that and get it back with the attorney, you know, then you can work on different things. I don't know, you know, like you said, two weeks might be tough. But, I mean-
But it should be on the agenda, just, just to keep it going.
Yes. Well, and again, I don't want it on the agenda every time just to draw a crowd in, in the news media either, you know? But if, if we're getting nowhere or no suggestions or whatever, and, or they put something together, we do have to discuss it as a whole in public, you know? So, again, I would send those suggestions over directly to the town manager if we take this back tonight.
So, I moved the ordinance. I would like to amend that motion and actually suggest that we table it for this evening.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to table, seconded. That means there's no more public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it. If you have any comment, you can bring it up at public comment. Thank you.
Business licenses. Request from Unforgettable Events Party Ball for an amplifier loud speaker and theatrical performance shows and exhibitions license for premises located at 1745 Main Street, Unit 5.
Move, move the license.
Second. Moving second. Hi, good evening. Welcome back.
Hi, how are you?
Hold on one second. Kids, good night and thank you for attending tonight.
Thank you.
Sorry you had to sit through that for this part.
I know. Very intense.
Well, you did say last time you were here, you wanted to learn more about what goes on, so.
Yes, very, very intense. Um, so, I, I don't know. Um, so, I had sat down with- Um, so I had sat down, um, with the fire marshal and the guys that work at the fire department and, um, also sat down with the, uh, the building inspector. And they had put a few more things on my list. And I got those things done. I took my crowd management class on the 26th and passed. And now they're saying that I need a second bathroom added to my hall. I brought a list of halls that's in Rhode Island, all, all over Rhode Island, Pawtucket, Cranston, Warwick, Lincoln, that is just like my facility. And they only have one bathroom and they are up and operating, so. I really don't know what's going on. Like, I'm just, just trying to open back up my business. This is about to be the second month of me not having my business open and I'm stuck with paying rent. And I'm not making no money. I'm just, it, it, this is just really, really, really bad for me.
Did they explain the issue with the bathroom? Did they tell you that it was a certain number of units within a bathroom for a certain number of capacity?
Yes, they did. And so they said it's over 50 people. You have to have two bathrooms. And that's why I got the list of the other halls that has been approved and they're up and running on their business. Their capacity is over 50 and they only have one bathroom.
And if you don't mind me asking, what is your bathroom situation now within each bathroom? Is there like a single stall?
Um, it's a single stall. It's a toilet and, um, the sign on it, it's unisex, male or female.
Okay.
I've had no problem with the bathrooms. The events that I throw is very in, is intimate. There's no strangers. So we're not gonna have people fighting over, "Oh, I gotta go to the bathroom."
So it's one single bathroom for the entire?
Yes, one single bathroom. And I mean, that's how I've been doing it for the past couple of months and never had an issue with one bathroom. And these other halls that have been approved and up and running, they never had an issue either. And I mean, they, they, they're up and running, like their business is going, so.
Remind me once again what your capacity is.
My, at first, when I first, um, when they first came, they said it was gonna be 118, but I, they gave me some things to do. And then after the incident happened with the cops coming, they put it down to 114. And so it's 114 now.
Okay.
Um, who is recording? Bob Asselmo, can you come on up for a second? Can you explain the bathroom thing?
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Um, we did have a conversation, a conversation, um, two weeks ago. Um, I explained to her how it works. And I also, um, told her, "Please call a state building official for a opinion on my call." Which, you know, that's always available and I, I always give that people to do with. I'm not perfect, but unfortunately, the code's the code. Uh, 2902.1 is the chart for, um, plumbing fixture needs. Uh, she's an assembly. There's two things in assembly. I can call it banquet hall or restaurant, whatever it is. It's really kind of V, because there is nothing for what she hears, but it's definitely an assembly. I use the less stringent count to give her less bathrooms. But there's nowhere in the code that says an assembly can have just one bathroom if it's over 50 people. The minimum is one and one, plus a service sink and a drinking fountain. That's what's required in my building code. If other towns aren't doing their job pro- uh, properly, I'm not gonna do that. I'm only going by the code. Uh, there's, there's no gray area in my code. I did call the state myself to get clarification, and they agreed with me. I did call Warwick and talked to the building official, and he agreed with me. He said he didn't know that happened. I don't know what to do. Did you call, uh, did you call state?
I did, I did call the state twice. I left the message. They called me back. I spoke with, uh, the secretary or whoever. I don't know who, who the lady is that I spoke to, but they took all the information down. They said they're gonna relay it to the commissioner. But I still have not got any phone calls from him or her. I don't know if it's a male or female. Um, so I, I've just been literally just waiting. And I, I just, I don't know. I, I get what he's saying. That's in his book and, you know, he has to go by his book. But, and like I stated in the meeting that we had upstairs, they even looked up the hall that I mentioned that's in work, that for the building inspector that they spoke to. They seen the pictures and they said, "Yeah, it's, it's one bathroom." And like I said, there's, I have nine halls throughout Rhode Island that only has one- And like I said, there's, I have nine halls throughout Rhode Island that only has one bathroom. My hall is literally just a rectangle. There's no corners, there's nothing to turn. As soon as you walk in, you can see the back door. It's nothing major. It's only eighteen hundred square feet, to be exact. So I mean, the bathroom is literally the only thing that is holding me. I I I spoke to a plumber um, to see, you know, if 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 it's possible for me to build another one. They want eight thousand or more. I'm already ten thousand in of having to pay two months of rent that I'm not even operating my business, my bills, my storage. And I have seven kids. I can't do it no more. I have, I'm, I put so much hard work into this place. I renovated with my kids. I I didn't hire any, we renovated, I did the floors, chandeliers, the place is beautiful. And I, all this money spent and now it's, a- and if I could bring this up, when I first got my business there, when they first came in, it was no problem with the one bathroom. But after this incident, now the second bathroom is being brought up. They they're saying that they didn't know that my place was gonna be a party hall.
Who was that?
The um, the fire marshals and and him right there, um, sorry, Bob. So when they first came, I sat down with them. So in, the name of my place is Unforgettable Events Party Hall. It's on the door, it's on the sign, like it's.
I I took a ride, I did take a ride by after the last meeting. I just wanted to see where it was in that building.
Yeah.
And I think I was on the phone with the solicitor at the time and I said, let's say unforgettable events, party hall.
I had all my ta- I had all my.
I don't know if it was, that's what I don't.
My door, the door was always there. The sign on the door was always there.
Yeah, I I, you don't know how bad I wanna give you this license, but there's always a but, right? There are things that have to be done. Now, the question to you, Bob, is you're saying a minimum is one male, one female bathroom regardless of capacity?
Two unisex it could be, right?
Or two unisex, two, two bathrooms, two bathrooms.
That's minimal.
Over fifty, over fifty is considered an assembly.
So. Like um, what if, what if you kept your events to fifty and under? Until you could do something with that bathroom situation?
I mean, if that's the option, cuz I I I have to.
Because I want you to start making money. You need to start making money.
I'm bleeding money.
So who is going to police that?
Yeah.
And I'm not saying, there's the same person that would police any capacity, right? I mean.
Well, the problem is this, um.
This is, this is my confusion. I'm sorry, Bob, but this is, this is one of my confusions with fire marshal, building official, so on and so forth. I'm dealing, I've dealt with this uh, fifty-two Providence Street, I think it's fifty-two?
Great.
Fifty-three Providence Street, where we have a capacity of one fifty, with a parking lot of fifteen cars. So I asked the question, how do you give that hundred and fifty capacity based upon a parking spot of fifteen cars? And and so the same thing I have here is, so the fire marshal goes into the building and says, you have a capacity of one hundred and fourteen people. How does, you're now authorizing her to have one hundred and fourteen people? And the building official says, well, the rule of a hundred over fifty is two bathrooms. So at that point, and I don't know the laws and I don't know the fire marshal rules, I'm, I never went to school for it. But when a fire marshal walks into the building and says there's one bathroom, should they know there should not be over fifty people in there or?
That's not the, that's not the.
That's what I'm asking, I don't know.
That's not the fire department. And uh, with the parking, there's also a chart in my book, what business and what uh, how many parking spots are required, handicap or um, regular. Um, my suggestion, Mike, ask her to call the state. If they give her a relief on that for some reason, I have no problem with it.
But you're not gonna do it and I understand that.
I can't do it.
I understand that.
So she can appeal to the state?
Absolutely. I mean, I I, I want her to make money. I told her that last time. I would love her to make money, wanna make as much money as she can.
But in terms of licensing, is there anything we can do to, until all the requirements are met? Um, cap that capacity at fifty? No?
We can't, we can't have the capacity be lower with the one you're not allowed to do?
No, it goes by square footage. The square footage of the building.
So for, so for individual, a business owner requests that they want their capacity to be no more than fifty, they they don't have that, right?
No, not by code.
Unless, unless they do something to.
Think it's cut, uh, cut the bill in half.
Now, you know, I'm I'm just trying to think outside the box here, but sometimes you see these, these baseball and football stadiums and they just put tarps over certain number of seats. And I I don't know why they do that other than to make it look better, but the fact that they're not selling out. But is that something that she could do?
No, because if you, she puts up a tarp.
Not a tarp, but but.
It has to be something for permanent.
Right.
That that square footage cannot be used by people either standing up or sitting down.
So it couldn't be a divider?
No, I'll just pick it, you said you had eighteen hundred square feet?
Yeah.
So in order to reduce her uh, occupancy down to fifty, you'd have to do the math now and say, okay.
What what would that square footage be, Bob? I know that's a hard.
Um, it would have.
Probably less than half, right? Yeah, maybe eight hundred square feet, something like that, yeah.
Then they have to get the, the structure would have to be perfect. You just can't put up, you know, sign that says.
No, I, no.
Which might, which might.
I was just using that as an example.
Cost the eight thousand dollars that she needs to put the bathroom in, so I, yeah.
And I know nobody gonna be a fan of me saying this, but we always.
You can know anyway.
Yeah, we always, we always um, approve these licenses contingent to police, fire and whatever. So that was, so if she can get relief from the state, she don't have to wait two more weeks for us. You know, so um.
But what, careful with that.
Yeah, we.
What is she gonna seek relief for?
One bathroom.
And, no, and the reduction of occupancy along with that?
That's up to her, but if she really, I think her first road is she wants to seek relief to one bathroom and keep the capacity where it is. But secondly, if that doesn't pan out, then she would probably have to seek relief to reduce her occupancy.
As long as the building official keeps uh, the manager in the loop as to what's going on and also uh, fire, if necessary. I don't think that's a problem, but I have no idea how long.
Well, it seems like, it seems like she's up to date overall to fire.
No, this particular issue, I don't know how long the state will take. Bob, you might have an idea?
I have no idea.
You don't wanna make a promise that.
No.
No, here's my issue.
Your building could take three to six months to get some response from the state.
Here's my issue with that. We we just, this is no offense. We we just sat here for a couple hours and then last meeting was three and a half hours going over behavior and what's, what's accountable and all that. And not saying that anything you're doing is is wrong, you wanna do anything wrong. But we're going back and forth talking about police enforcement. And enforcement, that's what it is. And how people are doing things the wrong way out in public and and that learns to, that turns to criminal behavior and and behavior that you're going against ordinances. I can't sit here and go against an order, court of ordinances.
Building code.
Build, yeah, I mean, I I just, I can't do that and say it's okay for you. That's pretty hypocriti- that's hypocritical of me.
And I think that's why I said.
And I, I can't.
With police, fire and building approvals.
And if you can't approve it, I mean, I'm not gonna ask you to break the code. Cuz that's what we'll be doing if that was the one tonight.
I I think what's gonna happen is you're going to approve it conditionally upon her getting everything in order at the town level and everything in order at the state level, because the building official is not gonna give her any type of CO until he gets that information.
That's not gonna happen in two weeks.
No, 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 I'm gonna say, I don't know how long it's gonna take, but I think what the uh, uh, president's proposing is that you grant it conditionally. And then the building official will let you know if it's been or met compliance. And if it hasn't met compliance, he's not gonna issue a CO for her to reopen.
Just about every one of our licenses we approve, they all, they all are, we're approving it. We don't know whether Bob or 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 the fire department's gonna find something wrong, we're approving it and then.
But we know there's something wrong and it's coming before us. It's not like there's a liquor license and somebody has to do this to get a liquor license and it comes before.
Actually, do you have a liquor license? No, I'm not, no alcohol, yeah, okay.
Using that as an example, you know, that's something we're in control of.
If I may, has the certificate of occupancy been revoked?
No.
All right, so in order to not allow her to be open, have these types of events, you'd have to revoke that.
Well, there's a CO on the whole building given at time of um, when it's built. There's only one CO given. This would be an approval for the business.
But you'd have control over that approval and you could withhold the approval until you get verification from the state that she's in compliance.
Where where does the landlord stand in all this?
Um, he, I I I called him and spoke, I have a three-year lease with them that I s- signed. Um, so he said if I have to build a second bathroom that I could do so he doesn't have a problem with us doing that.
Triple net lease, you're responsible for it.
Yeah.
So, like, I just wanna ask, so, and I know the landlord, but you're, you're in a building.
Yes.
That you're gonna spend a lot of money into, put a lot of money into. And in three years, your lease is up.
Yes, but it's, it's up with, like, if if I wanna keep it, I can. So it's not up and then it's finished. So I could renew it, yes, I could renew it if I, if I, I choose to.
Well, look, I'd like to bring up um, a department, there's um, I have three applications in front of me for the same exact thing that she's doing and.
It's not, it's not her.
All of a sudden, it got busy with this, I don't know what's going on.
But that's not, that's not for you.
Yeah, I know.
Again, I'm I'm trying to think outside the box and I don't even like what I'm thinking right now about this suggestion. But what if there was a a portable, a porta potty outside in the back, out the back door?
Not allowed by code.
Okay, again, I don't know these things, that's why I'm asking.
I asked that, so that was my first question.
That was the first one, okay, all right.
Chief, do you wanna say something?
Yeah, I just wanna confirm, I interpret uh, no objection to that. Fire department's been there and whatnot, you know, just the CO detector, you do get the crouch, you have to present that. Okay, the delay we're all set with. But I also um, noticed the next thing on the agenda is um, for Holy Ghost. For an act, so how is it that they have to come like each time and you go and we're here looking at, doing something that is just continuous? So is there a stationary center or should there be any sort of?
Every, every license that goes before the council, we have to get sign offs from each of those departments.
There are Amplifier Loudspeakers outside too for this event, not inside.
Okay.
Because they have a theatrical, they have a license for inside.
They do have a license.
So they have a, they have a license for inside. When the Holy Ghost has an event outside, this is a trunk or treat, so they need to come, anything outside, they need to come before us.
Well, you can.
But but every, every license and registration has to get sign offs from every department, so it's not just everyone's treating the same.
Yeah, sidebar.
No, but if, if she does, so here's what I have to say. If she does happen to get the appeal through the state and the state overrides Bob, which in times it does happen, we know that. If the state overrides Bob, then she don't have to worry about coming back before us. She has to still get the approval and the sign off, cuz once they override you, you still have to sign off on it with their override, correct?
Right, correct.
Yeah, so the town.
That's what you think, I mean, you you got something.
No, um, it's been two weeks and I don't understand why the state hasn't gotten back up with her and.
Hey, Bob, I've been dealing with a no turn on right sign down on Fairview Ave. Poor residents been emailing, emailing. I had to get a state rep involved, it was over two months before you got a response. And once the state rep got involved, got a response the next day. So I I I don't disbelieve that the state's not responsive at this point.
I don't either, I don't either. Um, um, doesn't make me happy because this is what happened.
Puts it on you, yeah.
You know, I look like a bad guy. Um, I would look, you know, if she went to the, right to the door and right of that, this uh, the state is on Justin uh, Justin Boulevard.
Okay.
And, you know, walk in there, they're not gonna deny you.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? Um, you can talk to anybody in there, should have the thought to get you to the right person and let him know um, the situation you're in. Um, you know, I've done what, I've done what I could. I've called the state to see what, you know, not see, to give it a bag, it's not, that's not for me, but.
Yep.
To make sure I'm on the right, going the right way about it.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this than I think this gentleman? Yeah, it's not, well, it's it's comment on the license, yep. So just come on up to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Kissalika, the address is seventeen fifty-five Main Street and that is the abutting property. We're um, abutting property to the seventeen forty-five address. Um, you know, you've got um, state fire code or building code that says if you have this much square feet, you need to have the following things. And that's, that's from the state. And I'm pretty surprised that the town council was thinking that we can just go in there and tweak those numbers and in the town of West Warwick. No.
So we're not, we're not.
So you're saying that she needs to get the state to change that and that'll be fine with you?
Everybody's legal right, no matter what, fire inspection or building official, if they don't like the town's answer, they have the right to appeal to the state board.
That's what I'm thinking.
So she has that right to appeal. So our, our building official is denying her application based upon one bathroom.
Right.
She has the right to go to the state and appeal that decision. They can overturn that decision or they can live by that decision.
Right.
Now, the state doesn't supersede the town.
Right, so that's gonna come from the state and not from the council.
Correct.
That's what I wanted to clarify, okay. Um, first, I would like to start by um, addressing some papers here. I made copies for all the council members and also for the town solicitor.
Just watch your step coming up. Took the watch your step sign down.
All right.
Thank you.
Copy just matches when you look at it, so.
Thank you.
It's, it's an illusion, yeah.
So Ms. Kane, uh, Ms. Hall, um, this first paper I'm showing right here, you recognize this is coming from your Facebook page, right?
Yes.
Okay, I printed this on Sunday. Um, it says that was six days ago that you made this post that's at the top of the page, right?
And that was about someone.
About someone who uh, wasn't gonna be able to have their event at your place, right?
Yes, and I had to give money back.
Right, and um, and you weren't very happy with the way the town was treating you.
No.
You said this ain't right. What ain't right?
It did, and I'm I'm so glad you're on my page, but you got it wrong.
Yeah.
That statement was for the girl.
Yeah.
This is not a hearing, Mike? So you're not really allowed to ask her questions. You can make, you can make statements to the council, but you really, you really aren't in a position to ask her the questions.
Okay, um, so.
Can I, can I answer?
No, just slide over so he can speak.
Apparently, you gotta listen to me. So I would suggest that the council can infer that this business, which is trying to open up here, doesn't agree with the policies and procedures that you're requiring it to um, comply with. The second page, uh, council members, is from the Rhode Island Secretary of State's website. For Unforgettable Events Party Hall LLC, and as you can see about four lines down, this LLC was revoked by the Secretary of State on September seventeen, two thousand twenty-four. So as a result of that revocation, I think your solicitor will advise you, it is not allowed to conduct any business in the state of Rhode Island. I don't think it's allowed to apply for any licenses. I don't think it's allowed to receive any licenses. Uh, the third thing I would like to address is the name of the registered agent, which is Tanis Hall, one forty-eight Atwood Avenue. I've checked one forty-eight Atwood Avenue in Cranston. That is a UPS store. It is a mail drop, it's a post office box, I would, um, and according to the Secretary of State's website, on the last page of what I've delivered to you, the registered agent is not allowed to have a post office box or a mail delivery type company, a postal company, as a registered office that does not comply with the Secretary of State's requirements. And it states that um, that the registered agent must be on the premises during normal business hours. So in an awful lot of ways, Ms. Hall has not complied with what businesses are expected to do. They're expected to follow the rules and regulations of the Rhode Island Secretary of State, and they're not that hard to do. They're expected to follow the rules and regulations of the Rhode Island Secretary of State, and they're not that hard to do. And before the LLC was revoked in June, she received a letter that was sent to one forty eight Atwood Avenue. Telling her that if she didn't file her annual report and of course, along with that, pay the taxes owed to the state, uh, Division of Taxation. That she was going to be revoked and she had at least sixty days notice of that, and she failed to do that. Um, this, this is a business that while I'm sympathetic to her plight that she signed a long term lease. The fact of the matter is that she leased a retail store. And now wants to take that round hole and squeeze this square peg through it. This building was never designed, built, or intended to be a party hall. It was designed to be a retail store, which is why you have the one bathroom in there, it was not expected that it was gonna have a hundred and fourteen. People in there, it's expected to be full of shelves and merchandise and relatively quiet people. If I were on this council, I would want to know from Ms. Hall, who is going to provide the security when these events are taking place? Because in order to do this properly, an event hall like this, you need to have doorway security. So that you can control the number of people coming in, so that you don't exceed the capacity. You need to have someone searching those people to see whether they're bringing alcohol, drugs, or weapons, or something of that nature. It's at event halls, you're gonna be asked to give a license, a theatrical and amplified music type license. Um, she could have live bands in there, she can have, um, any kind of party once you issue that license. And there's not much that can be done about it, so total strangers can be coming in there and intermingling. You need to make sure that it's safe for all the people inside there, the people that are coming through, so they need to be searched. They need to be checked to see whether they're coming in intoxicated or high on drugs. Number two, she needs somebody inside to keep an eye on what's going on among the patrons that are already in. For security reasons, to make sure there's no stealing of pocketbooks, cell phones, drug dealing, smoking in the corner, things of that nature. Number three, although she's not going to have alcohol on the premises, inside the premises. I would like to know, if I was on this town council, what she plans to do to prevent people that are patrons of her event. From leaving the premises and walking over to the park in their car in the parking lot. And having a drink there or smoke a little bit of pot over there and then come back into the premises. Or walk to the very conveniently located liquor store and pick up some liquor there. And is she gonna have that kind of thing where, oh, there's no alcohol on our premises, it all takes place right over there? Which I would wanna know if that's the case, if, um, my town council's police department might have to be the one enforcing. What's going on in the parking lot, traditionally places that feature these kind of live, uh, events where people come there, they may be dancing. They may be, uh, live bands or whatever, um, you've got, you've got, um, you've got situations that occur in the parking lots, different people. You know, different people that don't necessarily know each other, I know she says everybody's going to know themselves, but once you grant the license. How do you stop that? So, as far as I'm concerned, um, the last thing is. The sound, the noise, this has been operating unlicensed, as you're aware, and. The adjoining property, and I think there are other people here tonight to testify to this, will tell you that the noise is leaving that building. It's coming over to seventeen fifty five Main Street, it's coming to the next property, seventeen fifty nine Main Street, it's going down the river. She doesn't have enough control over the noise. If I were on the town council, I would want this place soundproof so that the noise inside stays inside and that's. If the noise is in the parking lot, somebody controls what's going on, if they have cars with radios. Or, um, loud fights or whatever it is, um, that that somebody from inside can go out there and say, quiet it down, or we're gonna call the police. Those are my points, it's really too loud, the way it is right now, she soundproofs it. And the sound stays inside the four walls and the parking lot's quiet, that cures a lot of my concerns, thank you.
Okay, I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Alright, I don't know if we're talking about the same venue. Um. So forgive me if I, if I apologize if I'm, if I'm wrong, you're located in, um, New London Square, correct?
Yes, uh, seventeen forty five Main Street.
Big Domino's and.
I'm in the right spot, I driven by it myself, that's it, that is my ward.
Yes.
Um. I don't live right next door, but but I don't share some of the same concerns that you have, only because you're applying and I just wanna just correct it. Um, owner's resident, according to the paperwork we have, is one fifty eight Washington Road in Barrington, correct?
Yes.
That's where you live?
Yes.
Okay, so, right spot, correct?
Yes.
Um, what you're applying for, like we talked last time, was an assembly for baby showers, birthday parties. Um. I don't see. I mean, I'm I'm expecting some, that's what I'm expecting, cause that's what you're applying for, um. Um, if things get out of hand or so, I mean, we're in a big parking lot where there's a lot of other businesses, so. You know, obviously people can congregate in the parking lot, I mean, you see it all the time, people leave Jell's Kitchen, they hang out for a little bit and talk. Um, that's not really a concern of mine, it it's more of. We had an issue last time.
Yes.
I don't wanna talk it to death, obviously, we, that can't happen ever again.
Yes, and can I speak on that? Because, uh, when I, when I met with the fire marshal and the, um, the building, uh, inspector. I said I will no longer have sweet sixteens at my hall, because I noticed that was the problem. And I don't wanna repeat that problem, so I I said I'll keep it at ki- kids' parties and baby showers. Cause those are more subtle, quiet, you know, no problems.
And there is no alcohol?
No alcohol.
And if somebody has a parent.
Yes.
Over twenty one, wants to go to the liquor store and buy alcohol and take it, put it in their car and take it home, that's, right, but I don't. I don't condone drinking in the parking lot either.
And also, I I do, I got my crowd management class and I, my, um, cousin, she went and got her crowd management class the same. Day I did, so she could be there on site with the customers and I.
And if there is an issue, then on the spot, that will be taken up with the police department.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Correct? Right, correct?
I believe you brought that up last night, you would have, you wouldn't have them unattended, which like.
No, cause before they was unattended, so that's how this incident happened.
But tonight, though, what's on the agenda is, is a lack of a bathroom.
Yes, lack of a bathroom.
I really don't wanna get off, I think we're off task a little bit.
Yeah, but.
I really think that's our only, I think that's my only concern is the, is the bathroom situation.
It, that's my concern too, so.
But you also just.
I feel like, I feel like my character's attacked because he, he doesn't know, he doesn't know who I was speaking about, I was speaking about the young lady that I gave the. The free party to, she has not offered me one dollar.
Alright, but that has nothing.
Yeah, so.
You're allowed to talk trash on Facebook, that's what it's for.
That was nothing about you guys.
Well, hang on, this has nothing, we're, we're.
Nothing to do with us.
We're talking about the restroom, and if there is an issue, all, you know, and I understand your point too, I know exactly what you're talking about, sound does carry. And and please just be cognizant of, of loud music and. You know, if you're doing kids' parties, there should be no profanity or anything, you know, and just be a good neighbor.
Yes.
And if not, that would, that's when it becomes an issue.
I feel like he's not even giving me a chance.
Well, I mean, I'm not gonna speak for anybody, I'm just.
I just want a clarification from Sarah, when we look at page two, the date of, uh, revocation certificate. Um, it was nine seventeen twenty four, when we, when we still issue a license. You also have to be state approved also to get your license from us, or no? So if this revoke was revoked. What is?
Only the LLC has been revoked, she's not prohibited from doing business as unforgettable events, party hall, or any other name. She's not, she's not required to have a corporate intent, identity or LLC identity in order to do business in the state of Rhode Island.
How do you get, how do you get insurance and so on and so forth?
Well, I'm, I'll go take care of that, cause I didn't even know that it was up, but I'll go take care of that.
I don't, I don't know how she applied originally in the, with the town of West Warwick, I don't know if she applied as an LLC or she didn't apply.
In, in, in Providence.
It's, it's from unforgettable events, party hall.
Right, but no LLC on that, this, this particular document doesn't say LLC.
But we have no liability based on these documents.
If the insur- if the insurance company will not insure, that's a different issue, but normally an insurance company's not going to insure you, just because you're not an LLC. Or a, an S corp or a corporation. But if you wanna make that part and parcel, I mean, you could, that's a far stretch. You have a lot, you have a lot of businesses in the town of West Warwick that are not incorporated, that get business licenses.
Okay, um. Again. Does anybody else wanna speak on this matter? Any other public comment on this matter? He doesn't wanna seem to get up, so. Just state your name and address for the record. Just, if you wanna say, reiterate?
No, Nicholas had a bonus, I am the neighbor that lives over at seventeen fifty nine Main Street, uh, the property next to, um, well, two over. Uh, the noise is a little bit, it was a little bit, you know, I'm not gonna say obnoxious, but it was rim buckish late at night on some of the parties. With that back door shut, though, it's a little bit more reserved, muffled, where it was manageable. To our concern, which is more terms of the back alley access, excessive noise with that door being open, if there was soundproofing. And then whether or not, you know, people be allowed access to what is in essence, a service corridor for the businesses. Um, so I wanna say that might have been the part that there was no one there to oversee it, in which case, obviously, if there's visibility on it, then it's a no point, but that was just, you know. A few comments from not understanding the whole process.
And we've heard, we've heard that from other establishments in the town, especially if their door is open, the noise travels. Whether it's soundproofed or not, if that door is open, so that's something you have to reiterate, that the door should not.
But I would add that, with the door shut, it is night and day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, no other public comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
I'm not, and that's only because of the bathroom, I'd like to get that straightened out first and move forward, so. I think that puts Bob in a very tough spot, and I don't think that's fair to him, so.
I, I would tend to agree that we should. Again, go to the state, I hope you can get everything taken care of, stand back here in two weeks and and be done with it. Yeah. That, that's a, uh.
Yeah, I, I kinda feel the same way, I, we can't ask our town official to go against code.
I don't think we're asking, I think, I think we were just.
But again.
No, if you can come back and you're fully in compliance.
Yeah.
That's, that's all we're asking, we're, we're, you know, I know I came up with some. Some suggestions and just spitballing here, but it it has to be official and it has to be done right.
Okay.
Denise, that's majority of the councils.
Bob, Bob, you or Tim or somebody needs to make it clear what the town needs. It's not simply a phone call that says, oh, I got the state to say.
That's, that's, that's up to the applicant to take care of her appeal, it's not, it's not the town's.
Understand that, but what, what does the town want from the state?
So they, she.
That's what I, that's.
Bob, keep me honest here, she is going to the state to seek a variance, the state will write that variance up if they give it to you. Or decline your variance.
Right.
And that's what you have to prove to the town.
It'll be sent to you.
And maybe take Bob's advice, you said if she went, if she went directly to Jefferson Boulevard, it may speed the process up. Or if not, reach out to your local, not the council, but if you reach, your local state representative, they might speed the process along as well.
Yeah, yep, okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, have a good night.
You too.
Go. Clarify, that was all, no's, no votes, I just wanna make sure I got the vote right.
I didn't, I didn't vote, but I know three denied it, so there's no sense of voting.
Well, maybe you should, maybe, maybe we should.
We're not gonna vote, we pass, or you're gonna vote, yes, or you're gonna vote no?
So I would, I would actually table this item, I would, I'd make a motion to table the item. The one that we just, we didn't vote on this. No, we didn't. There was no official vote, right. Sarah's saying she didn't have a vote.
It's not gonna prove, so you can table it and you can await and see what happens.
Yep.
Do I have a second to table it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was me.
Yeah. Request from the Portuguese Holy Ghost for an amplifier loudspeaker license for an event to be held October twenty fifth, twenty twenty four at eleven Ventura Street. Move the license.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? They have four bathrooms, so I know that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it?
Appointments and resignations, request from Kimberly Hussleman for appointment to the two hundred and fiftieth commission. Move the appointment.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Kimberly here tonight? No.
I would see her here, I don't know if you remember Kimberly, she had been before you a few months ago, she was looking to get involved.
Yep.
And if you look at the, what was posted on the agenda, uh, with the agenda, she's willing to do anything really, and she wants to be involved, so. Thank you for, for stepping up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it?
New business, approval of the collective bargaining agreement between the town of West Warwick, Local two forty five Rhode Island Council ninety four. H F S C M E A F L C I O for fiscal years two, uh, twenty twenty five through twenty twenty seven. Move approval of the collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion?
Quickly, on my memo to you all, um. On or about July twenty, twenty twenty one, the town entered in a three year collective bargain agreement with all three of our labor unions covering fiscal years. Twenty two, twenty three, and twenty four, those agreements expired on June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. The town administration and the negotiating team for the municipal union reached a tentative agreement. For the collective bargaining agreement for a period of July one, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. This agreement was ratified by the membership of the municipal union on September nineteenth of this year. And it is, town council approval is necessary, I supplied the fiscal impact statement. Um, prepared by our finance director, Kristen Bonoy. Cliff note version is just the main points of interest is the salary increases would be a three point five percent salary increase. Retroactive to July first of this year. And then two percents on July one of twenty twenty five, January first of twenty twenty six, July first of twenty twenty six. And January first of twenty twenty seven. The fiscal impact of the, the temporary tentative agreement is estimated to be slightly more than two hundred and forty one thousand. For fiscal year twenty five. A hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars approximately for fiscal year twenty twenty six. And a hundred and eighty six thousand, eighty nine dollars for fiscal twenty seven. A significant portion of the funding for the FY twenty five has been included in our approved budget. Other monetary changes include hourly adjustments to shift differential and training differentials, addition of Juneteenth as a recognized holiday. Several pay scale adjustments for positions of DPW crew persons, masons, operators, foremen. Police dispatchers, town hall maintenance workers, accreditation stipend for non sworn staff within the police department. And savings to the town due to increase of employees' co-share for healthcare. Elimination of summer hours and adjustments in clothing procurement and allowance practices. Again, this fiscal impact was prepared as required by state law by the finance director. It is my recommendation that the council approve this tentative agreement with the municipal union, I believe its approval. Of the resolution is in the best fiscal interest of the town and its citizens. And provides a sound agreement with provisions that enhance the town's ability to more efficiently manage. And operate a modern public service department and to attract and retain the highest quality of employees. For the important services provided to our community.
Does anybody have any questions for Mark? Any comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it?
Resolution to consider change order number three for the ice chiller system project twenty twenty three dash one twenty. Move the resolution.
Second. I had mentioned this previously as we were going through this process, that there was gonna be a pending change order. This is a small one in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for the purchase and installation of pipes and valves. And associated parts to, for the makeup water system of the ice chiller system at the ice rink. It'll be funded through the ice rink's fiscal twenty five operating budget.
Any questions for Mark?
Seems like we get a lot of these, are we at the point where this is just gonna be done?
It's done and operational.
It's what?
It's done and operational. We just needed the funding source.
Okay.
So you shouldn't see any more.
So if I say no, we have to go looking for pennies to work?
It's under warranty now, so.
Any other comment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
School building committee update.
All right, who wants to give the update?
I'll just say quickly, we, we have our meeting tomorrow at, at four o'clock, the school building committee. We will continue reviewing options for our stage two submission. Again, we're still exploring options. Nothing's been ruled out. We have a community outreach scheduled for October twenty-third at six o'clock at the high school, in which I believe that'll probably be the first opportunity for options to be publicly revealed. So I think we're hopeful to have vetted them within our smaller committee and have them out to the public that night on October twenty-third. I know we had the first community outreach on September eighteenth. I was at another event and couldn't attend, so I defer to one of you that was able to be there.
It, it was led by Tecton and Leftfield, the, the two consultants that, and they were very pleased with the turnout. There were probably twenty, twenty-five people there. They said certainly on a preliminary one that they wouldn't expect anybody really to be there. It lasted an hour. There were some good questions and good thoughts as to what people might like to see, and we encouraged everyone, and encourage, still encourage everyone to come out on the twenty-third, is that right, of October? Same thing, high school auditorium.
And that content's expected to be a bit more exciting.
Correct.
Exciting last time.
It was some excitement. You're right.
It was fun. Any questions for the town manager us? Thank you.
Upcoming appointments. Sewer use for to review appointment to fill a vacancy as an alternate member for a three-year term. Sewer use for to review appointment to fill a vacancy as a regular member for a three-year term. Tax assessment for to review appointment to fill a vacancy for a three-year term. School building committee. Tree warden. Recreation committee. Appointment to fill a vacancy for a three-year term. West Warwick two hundred and fiftieth commission. And Patuxet River Authority. Appointment to fill a vacancy for an unexpired term ending June two thousand twenty-six. Public forum.
Any public comment? None? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We said public comment. I said none.
Oh, come on.
If you feel like readjourning, come on up. Just state your name and address for the record.
Chris Boucher, forty-four, Rat Lane. Colonel Knott, Mr. Williamson, town council folks, madam repose. Concern has come to my attention in regards to the amount of new construction occurring throughout our town. Another concern is the number of complaints regarding flooding and lack of runoff throughout our parts of the town as well. I think it's worthy of consideration that both are related. In my neighborhood, there's been a lot of new real estate development along East Greenwich Avenue, and what triggered my desire to make this concern public is in regard to the property at the east corner of Green Bush Road and East Greenwich Avenue. In the recent past, the bar house was sold to new owners, and they subdivided the land. It's not unusual these days when you are purchasing a large lot. However, personally, would prefer not to see it. But it's their lot, and they can do what they want. However, my concern is not with the property owners or developers, but actually what the zoning ordinance allowed them to do. I was expecting to see just one new home on the lot, but instead, there are now three. It's a notable amount of development in what is actually a pretty small lot. It's also relatively incongruous to the more typical lots along that road. There was also a nice tree buffer dividing the plat, and now you can see the plat in all its glory. That particular corner does accumulate a lot of water during rainstorms and snowmelt. And there was actually a part of the original property that allowed excess water to run off the road, accumulate, and slowly leach over a relatively short period of time. I believe that leaching area no longer exists. Another thing I observed in the past is that whenever there is any type of comparative analysis regarding major, major redevelopment or envisioning of our town, the comparisons are not with other Kent County municipalities, but instead, Central Falls and Pawtucket. I think this is highly erroneous and needs to be rejected. The only thing our town has in common with those municipalities is that they are mill towns with some element of a river running through them. Plus, they are already highly urbanized, very much unlike West Warwick, which still is and should continue to be referred to as suburban. I've been observing past town council meetings on YouTube, and I recall past citizens regarding flash flooding, flooding of basements in specific areas at times where it hasn't occurred before. I also recall a sinkhole or two in the past. A one notable one in the Deerfield Hills area of Ward Five several years ago, and another product, which is another product of water runoff concerns. Plus, more recently, a road collapse between Manchester Street and Ty Oak Avenue. There was also evidence of grades settling in the Quaker Estates area a few years ago, and more recently, a small pond that forms at Gendron's Consignment on Coeset Avenue after a rainstorm.
That's actually been resolved.
Pardon me?
That's been resolved. The pond in front of Gendron's, they put a drain in there for the state when they put Coeset Ave.
Progress has been made. Most recently, there was a partial collapse and reconstruction of the bridge over Hawkinson Brook on Green Bush Road. Our future situation may be further compounded where I recently learned of a buildup of silt and other debris in the Patuxet River near the malls. There may be another one-hundred-year flood crisis coming much sooner than anticipated. I think if we combine these events into one common situation, we may have this town a potentially dangerous fiscal nightmare, requiring once again the charities of state and federal aid to help handle the crisis in the near future. So I have a couple of ideas to share. First, I would recommend a comprehensive in-house review. Also, if this is already in play, then I apologize for the redundancy. I would recommend a comprehensive in-house review of our current zoning ordinances, including a comparative analysis with our neighboring towns. In that analysis, I would recommend more restrictions on development and an outright ban on subdivisions with, that are less than half an acre. I would also recommend an expansion of wetlands and easements and green buffers from fiscal two thousand twenty-five onward. Secondly, I would also recommend a much more severe, much more severe impact fees on future new development, especially near streams, brooks, and ponds, as well as wetlands, and tax incentives for contractors to redevelop existing lots that have already been developed, as well as distressed and abandoned lots. Thirdly, a general memo to all field municipal workers, including police, fire, and sanitation, to report on any and all evidences of erosion, partial collapse, or unusual settlement of roads, easements, embankments, and recently undetected or report, or unreported seepage or runoff on roads and properties, so it can be addressed and repaired before it erupts into something major. I think these concerns that I'm sharing are rational and reasonable and worthy of advisement and consideration sooner than later. If we examine this now and not push the concern into the future, we may save ourselves from another major crisis. Woods are better to look at than houses.
Thank you.
Would you be willing to share that? I see all of us writing feverishly. Perhaps, no, perhaps you could give a copy to-
I'll email you the document.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Last call. Motion to adjourn again? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.